All right, good evening. I'd like to call this special meeting of the County Commission to Order. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss plans for distribution and administration of the COVID-19 vaccines in Buckham County. We're also going to be discussing potential county's support for individuals and businesses in Buckham County that have been financially harmed by the COVID-19 pandemic. So, we're going to start with a discussion of the vaccination plans and I think Stacy Saunders is going to get us started. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. Fletch will be joining me today as well. I'm going to quickly go through just the situational report so that we can get to your questions because we really want to answer those so that you have that as a reference as well. So, we'll just go ahead and jump. So, key messages today that we're going to be doing the situation report and just the review of the rollout of the vaccine locally. And I'm sorry that that there's something must be where we're using a different technology. But currently, we are seeing still a high level of new cases in our community. We are seeing about 138 new cases per day on average. We were seeing close to 133 to 135 the last time we talked to you. Our new cases per 100,000 population per week has increased has increased from last week and is currently at 400 cases per 100,000 per week. This is the visual, the map, the statewide map visualizing that. And you can see here that we are in that lighter phase of 400, but just on the cusp of that, getting ready to go into the next phase. This, while this rate is increasing, it is at a slower rate than the weeks before. So, from last week to this week, we saw a 4.7% increase in that rate. And that's actually a much smaller rate increase than we were seeing in the weeks previous. I'm hesitant to say that that is, you know, a little bit of a shining hope, but it does look like over the last couple of weeks that we might be at a very high plateau because we are just now seeing some of those cases from those incubation periods from Christmas. With that being said, our percent positi- our percent positivity. Sorry, Max, it's not going forward. There we go, thank you. Percent positivity continues to increase as well as of yesterday. Our percent positivity was 11.4%. This is the statewide map showing the percent positivity across North Carolina. This is a 0.5 percentage point increase from last week. Midweek, I will say around Wednesday, our percent positivity was about 12.5%. So, we saw it rise through the week and now coming down a bit. And again, little glimmers of hope, but that rate, that percent positivity is extremely high, far higher than the 5% that we desire it to be. Again, hospitalizations, here's our regional look and you can see it here. What I was explaining before is that our hospitalizations remain high, but you are starting to see that yellow line, which is the trend line, show a very high level plateau very early. I'd like to see that stay for a couple more weeks before I truly believe that it's there. But that does, that trend line is showing a bit of a plateau. These are our local metrics as of yesterday. And this is essentially what I was just saying, that our new cases per 100,000 population per week is at 400. That's an increase of 4.7 from the week before. Our percent positivity to 11.4, which is an increase of 0.5 percentage points. That actually is an improvement from the week before of change in the derived indicator. Our total diagnostic test per 100,000 remains high. Our deaths still remain high again as long-term care facilities get the memo that they have to make sure that they report the deaths within 24 hours. And then our hospital indicators that we, we measure being the inpatient beds occupied by COVID-19 and the percent ICU beds occupied by COVID-19 actually went down slightly this past, this week from about 14% in the inpatient beds to 12.1. And the percent ICU beds were, was in the 30s and now is at 29, so a slight improvement there. And with that, we'll, we'll go right into vaccine. So, I just wanted to remind folks that this is the current revised vaccine prioritization plan for North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. We started with Phase 1A, which were healthcare workers critical to COVID care, treatment, assessment, procedures, long-term care facility staff and residents, medical first responders, those who are also in the first wave of administering the COVID vaccine just this week, yes?
Hey Stacy, before we leave the metrics portion, I just had one question. When we talk about the positivity rate from tests and it's 11.4 now, is it correct that within the medical community, the assumption is that, that, I mean, that's obviously the percentage of people who got tested who were positive, but that's not necessarily the same thing as the percentage of a population
That's correct.
having COVID because obviously it's a lot of times when folks are having symptoms or not feeling good, they think they might have it, that they go get tested. So, it's, the, the percentage of people at any given time in the community is a smaller number than, than reflected in, in the positivity test result, is that, is that right?
So, this, this indicator only shows you of the folks who got tested, what percent of those tests are coming back positive. There are all sorts of folks out there who may be having symptoms but never get tested, right? And so, you're not capturing that population. So, this only is an indicator about the tests that we receive that come back that are positive.
And for that reason, is it true that it's, it's really in a community like, like ours, for example, it's really not possible to know at any given point in time what percentage of people in the community might be positive for COVID? It's just probably just not knowable based on the way we are doing this, right?
That's right, like at this point, this is our best proxy for community spread and transmission because in order to get it for the entire population, it would require
Right, so much.
so much more of that.
Okay, thank you.
So, to go back to the vaccination prioritization plan, when we talked to you last time, our plan was to begin vaccinating in Phase 1B Group 1, which are the 75-year-olds and older, beginning this week. And we have begun that. We'll talk more about that in a little bit. So far, these are the only two phases that we are currently vaccinating, which are, we continue to vaccinate the Phase 1A healthcare workers critical to COVID care and now the 75-year-olds and older. I just wanted to show this slide because as folks talk about vaccine supply and being able to use vaccine and quickly, you know, quickly getting it out and what does that look like at a local level, I just wanted folks to understand how vaccine comes to us. And so, what you can see on, on a Friday, we receive notification, a Thursday or Friday, we'll receive notification of what we expect to get the following week. So, that notification comes, we start planning, opening up schedules based on what we expect to get. That, that actual shipment does not arrive until Tuesday or Wednesday. So, I have not received word that we have gotten our week's shipment for this week. So, we, so then we begin using that typically the day after it arrives and receive notification again on the following Friday of what we'll get the following week. So, just, this is just a reminder to folks that while, when you see that Week 1, Week 2, folks think of that as a Monday through Friday or a Monday through Sunday, it's actually more like a Wednesday through Tuesday operation because what we receive on Tuesday and Wednesday gets us through Thursday and Friday of the week we're in and carries us into the next week until our next shipment comes. I hope that that makes sense.
Just a quick question, Stacy. Once the shipment arrives, how quickly are you all able to start administering shots from that shipment?
So, typically within the 24 hours. So, once we get it, we have to prep, we have to put it into CVMS, we have to put in inventory, get it ready, and then we can start using it.
Okay, great, so you get it, you do those backend things, appointments open up, you begin booking them, and by the next day, the shots are being administered.
That's right.
Thank you.
So, just a reminder about Phase 1A rollout. So, Phase 1 rollout, the healthcare workers critical to COVID care, COVID-19 positives. Right now, we're utilizing existing community provider email list. So, this was the groups that we recognized that had, are critical to the care of COVID positive. So, they're assessing, they're testing, they're providing care. So, these would be the, the providers with, within our community that are not necessarily hospital-based, that are doing this type of work. So, these could be the urgent cares who are doing testing and initial assessment of a COVID positive patient and providing care to them. This also includes our testing staff, so the testing staff at our community sites, medical first responders who may have to provide care to someone who they do not know their COVID-19 status and may have to do CPR, so those types of folks. We have a list and worked off of that provider list and those medical first responder lists to get those provider agencies aware of their availability to receive vaccine and then provided them with all the information. Did a bulk upload, which I know doesn't mean much, but I'm going to try to explain that, which means we asked them, "You're a 1A provider, send us all of your staff that meet this criteria in this form so that we can input that into the database. You'll receive a notification and then we'll start scheduling you to get vaccinated." And then we utilized Irwin Hill's site for the initial two weeks of that 1A rollout. This 1A rollout also includes the long-term care facility staff and residents, skilled nursing facilities. We're over, we're almost at 100% enrollment in the federal vaccine program. We had about 90 smaller long-term care facilities that were not enrolled in the federal program that the health department must vaccinate. And we had one of our coordinators reach out to them and start understanding more about that group. And we realized that about 14 or 15 of them were actually enrolled in the federal program. And so, we, we did not have them on our list as a federal enrollee. So, corrected that and then began, continued to reach out with, with them. And we had groups that were ready for vaccination, some that declined. And we have started vaccinating that group that the health department is charged with by using our mobile vaccinators. We began that last, last week and continued this week. And I know some of you were really interested in the CVS/Walgreens program. I was able to find out a little bit more information about that. I think County Manager Pindrew was also on a call where she heard some updates about that too. And so, CVS and Walgreens have been receiving their allocations from the state. And just a reminder that the federal government sends an allocate, or tells the state that they have an allocation. The state has to divide that up amongst the different providers, one being CVS and Walgreens as long-term care facility federal providers. And that, that gets taken from the state amount. They have to date been given about 169,000 doses through that, through an allocation, through those allocations. And to date, have vaccinated 38,895 through that program.
In North Carolina?
Statewide, yes, that's the best I could get you.
No, that's, that's great. And that, and again, I'm sorry, is that, that program is just for the nursing home staff and residents? Not for any demographics beyond that group, right?
That's correct, staff and residents of the, of long-term care facilities.
Hey Stacy, this is Commissioner Edwards. Do we have any idea how many folks in the 1A still need vaccinated?
Thanks for the question. And so, last week, we thought of the group that we had the bulk, bulk emails for and were able to bulk upload. We had about 50% of them respond, with response rates and being vaccinated. We know that that was happening over holidays and so we reached back out to them. We had quite a few of them come out yesterday and today. We'll have a better number probably after this week. So, we continue to vaccinate them this week with our, with our 1B Group 1s. I think someone else had a question.
I had a quick question about the mobile, the mobile vaccinators. Briefly tell us what their capabilities are like in terms of quantity and...
Yeah, actually, I'll let Fletch tell you the breakdown of what that team looks like if you want to.
And hey Fletch, before you speak on that point, question on, just following up on the CVS and Walgreens. So, they're focused on the long-term care facilities now, but as we get into later phases, their retail facilities will also be providing general population vaccinations.
That's the idea. I, I just want to be very clear and say that, yes, the plan is that other providers within the community would enroll and be launched as COVID-19 vaccine providers. It is an assumption that I am making that large pharmacies would do that just as they did with testing.
Is that part of like the North Carolina plan? Because I thought I read something that, that some of those national companies had like national contracts to administer vaccines, but maybe it's on the nursing, I don't, I don't, you know, has any of that been...
I only know of their participation nationally or federally through the long-term care facility vaccination program, which is a federal-run program and is separate, parallel to the state, but separate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, currently, we're breaking down our vaccine operations into two methods. Fixed site operations currently at AB Tech and our mobile operations. Currently, we have three mobile teams assigned. Those teams are just three members. They come from the same staffing we use for the fixed site staff. We just, you know, as we pull from that same pool. And they deploy to those long-term care facilities, that list of 90 minus, you know, 14 that we were in charge of public health. We started those operations last Tuesday. We allotted 100 vaccines last Tuesday. This week, we're allotting 330 with those operations occurring Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. And once we know our allotment from the state next week, we'll allot another doses specifically to those mobile operations. But then they're, they're going onsite, essentially doing the same thing we do at fixed site operations, but they're taking it into the patients' rooms potentially or into a lobby space and having them come down there, running a little mini point of dispensing.
Thank you.
Right, so currently, we're set up, each of those is a team of three. Two assign to vaccination, one switching to a one paramedic as the lead of that team, who also acts as a vaccine handler. Just reminder that these, these vaccines aren't as simple as just necessarily pulling from the vial. Some of them, particularly the Pfizer one, requires some special handling and mixing, thawing processes as with the Moderna. You know, they have to very particularly handle and control the refrigeration temperatures while they're out there doing those operations. So, it's very complex handling of the vaccine and then the distribution.
Okay, thank you.
So, Phase 1, sorry, Phase 1B Group 1 rollout. Again, this is our individual 75 years and older. We did establish the phone line, as you're aware, heavy demand for this vaccine and such heavy demand that we created some phone issues. We created an online portal for self-scheduling, able to schedule two weeks out and provide a minimum of 500 for two weeks out. And then when we receive the notification of what we're expecting to get the week following, we can open up more schedules. We were being very cautious because right now, we do not know until we get that notification what we are going to get. So, we aired on the side of caution with just our, you know, what we were seeing with our first allocation and knowing that we had to designate some of that to long-term care facilities that were our charge. So, as we receive more vaccine and that number increases about what allotments we get, it is very likely that that 500 minimum can be expanded to have more of those appointments as a minimum and then opening them up as we receive our notifications. We established our larger and more accessible mass vaccination site at AB Tech. Some of you came by to see that today, we appreciate you doing that. I do think it helps for a better understanding of how that actually works. And we also provided appointments at our 40 Cox location where the health department is for the first week of Phase 1 Group, Phase 1B Group 1. That has been working very well. We are running it through our immunization clinic, so much more, much reduced than what we can do at AB Tech. And then after this week, we will be shifting everybody over to AB Tech. We have booked all available appointments, that's approximately 1,200 appointments this week. And at the site, individuals are enrolled in CVMS, so they come to us. We register them into the state COVID vaccine management system, which is CVMS. They should receive a second dose reminder about one week before their second dose is needed and then they'll make an appointment with the local health department. In some of the questions that you have asked that we will go through soon, we touch on what we are looking forward to, which is our CureMD electronic medical record add-on that will potentially allow us to make appointments for the second dose at the time they're getting their first dose vaccination. That's, that's a game changer for us, so more to come on that.
Stacy, did you say they'll get an email reminder?
They should receive an email reminder from CVMS to make their next appointment.
Stacy, let me ask about that, the second appointment. Because I got the first shot yesterday and said the second appointment, it will be February 1st. Now, are you telling me to get the second appointment, I'm going to have to go through the phone again?
Well, we're hoping, so what will happen is that we're hoping to send out a link or send out the notification for those who received their doses this week, that you would get yours the week of February 1st and that you would go onto our website with a special plate, we'll be adding a special place for the second doses. Right now, we just have the first dose because no one, no one yet in 1B Group 1 will be ready for second dose yet. And our second doses that will be scheduled next week for our 1A population, were done by bulk uploads, so it's a lot, a lot easier to reach that, we knew that census. So, we can reach that group a lot easier than we can some other folks. And then what we hope is that with that CureMD add-on is that we would not have to send people directly back to the website to do that, that we would be making it at the time.
Well, don't worry, I'll let you know if it's a problem. I've got one other question too. I noticed yesterday and it moved smoothly, I mean, you know, after you can get an appointment, it's fine. But I noticed the employees there. Now, have we hired more employees to do this or we barring employees from other locations?
That's a great question, I'm going to let Fletch handle that since he's done a really great job of organizing that staffing resource and can give you much more detail.
Thank you, Commissioner Marks, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit and see, I think those slides are coming later. But I get to speak to in general, the staffing you saw there yesterday is primarily Buckham County employees or contracted employees. So, I want to emphasize again, the public health is the lead, but a lot of the staff you saw, particularly doing logistics, comes from emergency services. But all of vaccinations currently are being done by public health nurses. A lot of the support is being done by other public health staff and some of the other staff you saw is newly contracted workers under a public health contract.
Yeah, because my concern was, I was concerned if we're borrowing from Peter more or less to pay Paul, it's going to catch up with us because these people will be there for a while. I mean, you know, they're not going to go away because when you look at just in my age group alone, you're talking about 40,000 people, you'll be vaccinating for quite some time. And then as you open up the others, but you know, I was worried if we going to start borrowing from different departments, we're going to cause problems in other areas, you know, why are we doing this?
Yes, sir, and later in the presentation, we'll be going over some staffing requests we've made to allow us to increase our capacity from 2,000 to 4,000 in this upcoming week and, and then what our long-term decision points are for that.
Good, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Stacy, I have a follow-up question on the second doses. You mentioned the cure system and people will go into that to register, but what about those that don't have computers or have online access?
So, we'll still have, we'll still have our phone line available as well. And so, folks can still make an appointment through there. We'll still have the online portal, all those options will still be available. And then I think later on in the slides too, someone had asked about that accessibility piece. It is okay for a friend, a family member to make those appointments for our over 75 population as well. We have had that happen already. And so, you do not have to be the individual to make the, the individual's appointment. So, if someone else has that access and can do that for you or help you or support you, then we support that as well.
Stacy, also with CureMD, are we not going to be able to get that appointment at the time? After February or so, would we not be able to make it?
Yeah, so to the previous question with the CureMD add-on, the hope is that at the time you're getting your first vaccine, we will be able to schedule you for your second one.
So, I understand this is a very small, you might be able to actually read the numbers on the screen, but I wanted to show you, this is a tool we're using to track and allocate our vaccine allotments on a day-by-day basis going forward. So, we're just tracking our Moderna and Pfizer in, the total in we have from the state for that week and what we're allocating each day. You'll see, obviously, we have some numbers in the future, those are just for planning purposes. But the big takeaways are this, is the totals we're taking into the next week and, you know, what our current stock is. But again, complexity here is from, we have to make this allotments on a Wednesday to Wednesday schedule and we don't know what our allotment for the next week is, probably to a Friday. So, we're, we're holding some in reserves for the following Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday until we know how we can supplement that scheduling with the addition. This, this week, we were able, we, on top of our addition of the 975 Pfizer, we had a additional 500 Moderna in, which allowed us to open up our schedule further than anticipated. We're hoping that trend to continue with an additional 500 or more of our base shipment in the weeks going forward.
And Fletcher, we, we expect that to be consistent going forward. It'll be Fridays when we learn what we've got for the next week. So, and we'll be able to then notify the public, here's what, here's what the next week looks like in terms of our capacity.
Correct, and I think as you can see, our, our planning through next weeks, we're, we're getting down to, you know, just a few dozen, safety buffer of a few dozen vaccines. And as we get better, better idea of how consistent these shipments are coming, we'll be able to even narrow down that safety buffer. But we're planning ahead, so every week, we're using almost our entire stock on hand.
And so, basically, those appointments will open up on Fridays when you learn for that following week?
Yes, as soon as we have confirmation of shipment, we'll open up that schedule.
Okay, thank you.
And then, right. Okay, so, and then I want to go ahead and start, we received questions from the board. We've worked out some responses, but Stacy and I are going to kind of tag-team our way through these just to make sure we answer all the questions you guys had. You want to start?
Yeah, so we figured we would really go and answer each one of the questions so that you could actually use this as a tool when you're answering those calls because I just want to be, I am going to go back and just hone in on that patience and understanding from everyone that even with perfect systems in place, we are very limited by the number of vaccine that we are receiving. So, it is likely that we will still get concern, calls of concern and frustration, not because we don't want to vaccinate folks, but we don't, we are limited by the number of vaccines. So, so we want to be able to give you all tools to go back with so as folks have these questions themselves that you'll, you'll have answers. And so, here, this is really about completing the administration of vaccine to all frontline healthcare workers. And so, covered this in the presentation that that Phase 1 included healthcare workers critical to the care of COVID positive patients. We reached all that were eligible based on our provider list. About 50% have received their vaccination prior to entering Phase 1B. We sent out those reminder emails because we know some practices and some folks were out for holidays. And the second part of that around frontline, frontline essential workers or frontline healthcare workers, the frontline essential workers are not included in 1A. Those are actually included, included in Phase 1B Groups 2 and 3 where direct care, help, direct healthcare providers and a frontline essential workers will be included at this time.
Stacy, just for clarification, when you say you, you reached all that were eligible, that means we, we contacted them?
That's correct, that's correct.
And about 50, 50% have currently been vaccinated, so we got about 50% left to finish up. And those will be taken care of through the additional allocations that we get each week. And those will be taken care of through the additional allocations that we get each week. We'll reserve a certain percentage of those to finish, to finish up this group.
We only reserve a certain amount for our long-term care facilities that were charged to, to vaccinate. Other Phase 1A providers are invited, continually get invited through the, through the emails that we send them and get scheduled. And so we had some show up yesterday. We had some show up today.
But they're not going through the same process of scheduling as like the AB Tech facility for the seventy-five and older group. They're getting invited to be scheduled at a different.
We're still using our bulk upload for those groups. And then we'll start with dose two, a second dose on that group starting next week. Yeah.
Okay. So is the expectation that most folks who want to go ahead and get vaccinated in this group will probably be able to do so within the next couple of weeks? Because they're not competing in that large pool of like all residents over seventy-five. It's a different process.
Once we get into other phases, if the, so to be quite direct about it, they've had, Phase 1A has had several, you know, a couple of weeks. After we go open up to those much larger phases, they will be a part of the process with just everybody else at that point.
Okay, thank you.
So for Bunkham County employees or those, the county is responsible for administering vaccine who work in a healthcare role, please describe what types of positions are in 1A compared to 1B Group 2 and 3. So 1A are those healthcare workers caring for and working directly with patients with COVID, including staff responsible for cleaning and maintenance in those areas, decedent care, et cetera. So these would be also healthcare workers who are, or healthcare and other workers who are at testing sites and vaccine sites, and then our long-term care staff and, staff and residents. The Phase 1B Group 2, again, are those healthcare workers and frontline essential workers who are over fifty. And then Group 3 is regardless of age. And North Carolina DHHS then has deeper dives that allow us to sort of know exactly what those groups look like, or it gives us examples. So at this point, for the Bunkham County employees, if they were medical first responders, if they are working a testing site, if they're the first wave of vaccinations, if they are some of our folks who are in direct care with COVID, COVID care and evaluation, they were included in 1A. So healthcare workers who have direct care, like clinic staff, would be regular clinic staff, not COVID types of work, would be included in that if they're in Group 2, if they're over fifty, and then in Group 3 regardless. The definition for frontline essential workers is immense, so I won't go over that. But I've given the links so that folks can get an idea of what is included in there right now. I will say that just like 1A, I suspect that we will see some refining of those definitions and even more clearer definitions and examples going forward, as lots of people are asking questions about that now. But the links are there for the prioritization plan. And the deeper dives come next. So this question's getting at, if, if a healthcare worker is in Group 1B, they're not eligible until most of the residents in 1B Group 1 have received vaccine. And so what we can tell you is that right now, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services determines when new phases are opened. And it is not definitive when they will move into additional phases. So we suspect that we'll be at least in this phase for a couple of weeks. The demand is very high. You know, I would hope that there would be some revision to any tentative dates that were put out that would allow us to vaccinate this group a bit longer.
So, so I've heard some stories, and you know, and I can't validate the accuracy of them, but some, I've heard folks say like, oh, in such-and-such county, I've heard they've gone ahead and started administering vaccines to people in these other later groups. So your understanding is that either that's perhaps not correct, or it's at least not consistent with what each of the counties and organizations are supposed to be doing. It's, we're also supposed to go at the same speed.
It's not consistent with the state's vaccination prioritization plan.
Which, which everyone should be following, right?
That is, that is the expectation.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Stacy, do you have any insights into the algorithm that's determining the dosages that different counties are getting?
I think that's on a slide soon.
Okay, thank you very much.
If it doesn't come up, then I will answer it for you.
Thank you.
I thought so. So this is asking about the organizations that play a role in administration of vaccine. And currently, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services initially rolled out vaccine provider enrollment to hospitals and local health departments only. CVS and Walgreens are vaccine providers through the federal program. This is not a state program. The state plans to enroll other provider types. This is in process. And we do know that there are a few FQHCs statewide that have been launched as enrolled providers, but not yet receiving direct allocation of vaccine. So that means they can give the shot, but they're not receiving vaccine yet. So they could receive it through a trans, through a vaccine transfer from another provider. It is likely that in the coming weeks, more providers like our FQHCs, our urgent cares, primary care providers would be enrolled and hopefully launched, even if they weren't getting direct allocations. And then in the last update, CVMS launched a provider self-enrollment process so that providers can do that through the CVMS website.
Quick question. Maybe none of these questions are quick, but can you tell us a little bit more about what that, that enrollment process is like? What, what does a facility need to have in terms of expertise, staff, refrigeration? What, what are we looking at there for a provider to enroll?
So the provider has to show that they have, they have the staff to be able to do it. They have the capacity to do it, and that they have the skill sets. Storage so much, I mean, that they have to have, they have to have vaccine storage available. They have to have a point person, contacts. But they don't have to have ultra cold chain storage necessarily for, for, to be eligible for Pfizer. Pfizer comes in its own thermal system that is good for a certain amount of time. So it is not, it does not preclude you from being an enrolled provider should you not have ultra cold chain storage.
Because we'll do it for them, is that?
Well, the Pfizer comes in its own thermal system that is good for, for several days. So as long as it's used within those days, otherwise.
Shipping box, does, does, okay, got it.
Yes. And, or they could partner with another entity to either have, to borrow their ultra cold storage.
I have one other question. I, someone shared that they were aware that Ingalls was hiring some nurses presumptively to also participate in this. Do you know if that's, if Ingalls is planning on being a participant?
I've heard the same sort of anecdotal information, but have not seen anything concrete or through the state that says that they will be a provider at this point. I would assume they would be, but I, I do not know that as fact.
So, so obviously, this is still, obviously, work in progress with the different organizations that want to participate, applying to the state of North Carolina to be participants, right?
Correct.
Do we have, do we have any knowledge about the timeframe for when different companies or organizations will, you know, be formally approved for it? Where kind of this will kind of come into a little bit more focus for what that's gonna look like?
That's all determined by the state, and we do not have firm dates as that will happen. That is currently in the process. And as I said, we have three statewide FQHCs that have already been launched. The state continues to enroll folks and get them ready for, for launch. But I don't have a concrete date as to when that will be complete. All of that is determined by Department of Health and Human Services.
Okay, thanks.
The only agencies in the community to be receiving vaccine is where this question is going. And yes, currently, Bunkham County HCA, in Bunkham County HCA and the Health Department have received vaccines. CVS and Walgreens also have received it. We do not have any further information about their rollout locally, only statewide.
And then the, the one other group that someone mentioned to me when they saw this question was the VA. The VA has also received an allocation.
And I believe that they are through a federal program because of the VA program. And this question's getting at, do each one of these organizations have a unique group that they are focused on? And I can only say that currently, HCA and the Health Department are the only ones receiving vaccine in Bunkham County. Vaccinating providers follow the Department of Health and Human Services Vaccine Prioritization Plan. And the Department of Health and Human Services is actively enrolling other providers. So so far, we are driven by the vaccine plan. So healthcare workers, critical to COVID care, and now seventy-five years and older. Those are our, our groups. This is getting to some of the questions you were asking. Again, just to reiterate that the Health, the Department of Health and Human Services prioritized hospitals and health departments at the, as the first vaccine providers. They are actively enrolling other types of providers. I do not have dates as to when those providers will be launched. There are a few FQHCs in the state that have been launched. But to our knowledge, they are not receiving vaccine directly. They might be receiving it through transfer from another provider. And that's what you're seeing there. The hospital and local health department may transfer vaccine to another enrolled provider if that provider is not receiving them directly.
So I have a question to follow up on that. I think during the briefing today with Governor Cooper, Secretary Cohen said that some hospitals are working with the county health departments when they have extra, I believe. And so has there been anything with that, conversations around that? If they do have extra, that we're able to get that out in another way?
That's been the guidance from the state to hospitals, that if they have more than what their 1A population is, that they should work with their communities to get that vaccine in a provider transfer so that it can go out to, to community. We meet weekly with our HCA representatives to, to see where they are with their vaccine. They are still currently, to our knowledge, vaccinating their 1A population. We'll meet again tomorrow where we'll discuss it again. But other than that, I don't have any other further information about that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I will.
So this next question is asking about, with the entire county population and our vaccine goals, you know, do we have any idea what percentage of the vaccines Bunkham County government has to provide to cover down the gaps between the other businesses, HCA, and pharmacies? So I want to break this down, this question down in a couple places. First, our public health goal for vaccine coverage in 2021 is seventy percent vaccine uptake. And this is, this is, this is already a lofty goal for us. We, we know, depending on the population surveyed, we currently stand at about fifty percent hesitancy. And we know there are other logistical hurdles. But our goal, our goal for 2021 is seventy percent uptake in the community. And as far as what percentage of that Bunkham County public health will be required to cover on, we have a really hard time now with the data available to know what that number is. I've listed here some, some of the variables. We don't know at what rate the federal supply to the states will expand. And depending on when that expands and how many other providers are enrolled, or what phase we're in, that will determine some of our coverage. We don't know the state's schedule for advancing through the phases. We don't know how many community providers will enroll and receive the vaccine, and then even if they receive it, and what quantities. And we don't know to what degree yet HCA system, Mission Health system can support the community as they finish up with their own charge, how much, how much they'll be able to turn and start assisting us with our efforts. So it's really hard to, at this, at this state, put a number on what percentage of these vaccinations will fall to public health. What we do know is what our capacity is. And as we work through those phases, we will turn a hundred percent of the vaccines we get in, into the arms of residents of Bunkham County.
Fletcher, I understand that we're working with all this really incomplete information from, you know, mostly the state government, I guess, at this point. So, so I'm not, I'm not asking this for any fault of our staff, since we just don't have the information. But this seems like a huge problem, not knowing this, right? I mean, are we planning to, so if we're gonna, if the goal is seventy percent, that means we need to vaccinate a hundred eighty-two thousand people, ballpark, in the county as a whole. And we need to do it twice, right, for each of those people. I mean, as I've heard the discussions, we talk about AB Tech, you know, and if the other facility, the old mall opens up, maybe the capacity for two thousand vaccinations a week, or something in that neighborhood?
We'll be honest.
Which, which would be, you know, if, if, let's just say, let's just say as this unfolds in the coming weeks and it, and it becomes more and more clear that the state's expecting local government to provide, you know, a really high percentage of the total vaccinations that actually get administered in, in the, in a county, then we would need way more capacity than that. I mean, I guess just sort of intuitively, it seems like, you know, we have, we have all these Ingalls. We have all these CVSs and Walgreens. It seems like surely the plan as it's presented, you know, as it kind of is presented by the state over time, will fully utilize all those private sector resources, too. So our role in this will be relatively modest. But that's just, you know, I mean, that's just a, a non-professional person speculating here. Is there anything more that we can, I don't know, do we, that we can kind of assume about, about some of, some of the ways other businesses will be involved?
Yes, sir. So I can speak a little bit to long-term strategy for this year. So start with our stance going into next week, the eighteenth. We'll be at Bunkham County Public Health, positioned to do four thousand vaccines a week capacity. And with our current allotments, that will cover what the vaccine we're getting. At some point, as our allotments increase beyond that scope, we, we're at a decision point. And that's, I think, what you're alluding to. We either have to decide whether public health takes on that burden, and we'll have to essentially double our footprint, double our staffing to accommodate those new allotments. Or that's where we can rely on those community partners, those other providers being enrolled. And if they're not getting their shipments from the state, that's when, when we hit our capacity, we can start transferring those additional vaccines to those providers. And that will take a huge burden off of public health and also give more opportunities and options to the community. And also will address some equity issues and address some of the weight. So instead of one resource, the community will have, you know, maybe half dozen, maybe a couple dozen of resources in the community to go get those vaccines. But again, we don't have a timeline for that. We're hoping in, maybe as early as February to start seeing some of those providers receive their own allotments.
Let me repeat back what I think I heard, make sure I got it right. So at, starting next week, we'll have the capacity to administer four thousand vaccinations per week internally with county, county internal capacity.
Correct. And I do, and I'll get this again in later slides. But when we talk about four thousand capacity, we have to remember that after that initial number, the initial dosage, three or four weeks later, we're automatically doubling our capacity, because we have to give new first doses and that second dose at the rate it came in. So a four thousand vaccine capacity gives us, one breakdown, two thousand new vaccines. And then three or four weeks later, depending on the vaccine, the two thousand second doses.
Okay, and actually, I'll just hold this for later. I bet you're gonna cover it, so, I'm good. I'm sorry, I do have one. The seventy percent number, that's a Bunkham County goal that we've come up with. Is there a state goal of seventy percent, or sixty percent, or eighty percent? Or have they come up with a, here's what we're shooting for?
I, I'm not aware of any specified state goal. That was through our incident managed team, management team, knowing that seventy percent initially is what the experts are telling us for that general shielding from herd immunity. We, we've, we understand that at fifty percent, we may be able to see some of our trends, our metrics shift significantly. But that goal is at seventy percent to hit that bottom threshold for herd immunity. So on to the next question. This was a question about, do we, really into the insight we have into the federal pharmacy program, how the CVS stores and Walgreens stores are responding. So we don't really have this data at a local level, as Stacy alluded to. We can see the state overall reports of vaccine in, vaccine out. And, you know, we're really hoping some more opportunities for providers come online in the next couple of weeks.
Just to add, yes, the, the hope is that the burden, right now, the burden is on hospitals and health departments, because those were the first to initially be rolled out and receive vaccine. But as the state continues to enroll those providers and, and vaccine supply becomes much more sufficient, the, yes, the, the goal is that all those providers would be enrolled in receiving vaccine, or at least receiving it through a transfer, so that we actually have much more community opportunity.
Stacy, can we pause for one second? I'm sort of processing what I, I think I just heard Fletch helpfully connect some dots. And I think it might just be worth a pause over those, is that this goal of seventy percent wasn't a random or aspirational target. It's the, the minimum number at which we begin to achieve herd immunity. So specifically in Bunkham County, we'd have to have about a hundred eighty-three thousand people. receive both doses? Before we would begin to see a herd immunity in the county? Is that an accurate?
Theoretically.
Theoretically, meaning?
But I thought we could see a trend changing at 50% if you want to.
Yes. So, so from epidemiologists looking at this are saying, you know, and this is all, you know, textbook kind of theory.
Sure.
But at 50% vaccine uptake, we could see, start seeing significant changes in our trends, or the exponential curve we're on now, start seeing that adjust. And then to get that, kind of like that minimum threshold for what we would talk about, the shield from that herd immunity starts at 70%. And again, this is, try, try to keep perspective, at the beginning of last year, this was a novel coronavirus before it was COVID-19. I mean, we don't, still don't know a whole lot about it. We're still learning about it. These are brand new vaccines. So just, that's just general epidemiology, virology information that, that, that threshold of 70% is where we start seeing that shield effect.
Okay, so there's a lot of number and data points, and I'm trying to think about ways we can effectively help our community understand what we're trying to do here. And one way to do that would say, we're trying to have 130,000 people get both shots to begin to see our trends reverse. And once 100 and whatever number I just said, 83,000 get both shots, we'll actually reach herd immunity, which is one of the goals in this marathon.
Theoretically, yes.
Okay. So that's helpful for me, at least as I think about the data points of 2,000 a week or 4,000 a week at, towards what we're working towards. Okay. Thank you for slowing down a bit to kind of walk us through the big picture we're moving towards.
Sounds like we need to approach the concept of herd immunity with some humility, knowing that we, we, we've never done this before and we can't, maybe it's 74% for, you know, to, to get us to that safety zone. We just don't, we just don't know, but
Exactly.
Textbook science says 70 is where we could get.
Right. And, and again, as, as we're doing, we see different polls, both in the, kind of focused on the state, but na, nationally. Depending on the population survey, that hesitancy is still hovering about 50%. And we hope over time, you know, with more education programs and as people see their friends and relatives get it with no consequences, that, that hesitancy will reduce.
That's an alarmingly low number. I'd love to talk about more, but I think you have some more slides about getting into that arena. Okay, okay.
So some of you were asking about vaccines free of charge. The actual vaccine is free to anyone. Providers can bill insurance for the administration fee. So that's the actual medicine, like the actual vaccine, the actual vial, all of that is free. Providers can bill insurance for the administration fee. That is the actual, like putting of, in the arm, all the work that goes around that. Insurances, including Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance, are covering the cost of that administration fee. So there's no cost to the actual person. For the uninsured, HURSA will pay that administration fee. So this is to sort of help with all of the, the costs that's around providing vaccine. But the actual vaccine itself is free to everyone.
HURSA? H-U-R-S-A?
HURSA, H-U, H-R-S-A. It's the federal program that has paid for testing and for now vaccine administration for, for folks who are uninsured.
So this was a question, assuming, you know, the volume at what rate, basically our throughput of our vaccination sites. So this is a calculator we use internally. Really the takeaway from this is I want to show you our current stance is what we've been at. Is, you know, be about a 2, 2,000 a week capacity and going forward with our new staffing, new footprint next week, be ready to do 4,000. Again, this is theoretical on paper. So we, we, we think when we go, we haven't had to stress our full capacity yet. And so when we see that, I think we'll get, be able to get nor, more numbers than this. From the nature of having, you know, all, all lanes open, having that back pressure from having the vaccines to give. But we just haven't had that yet because we haven't had the vaccines to put out. But we, we have, we're calculating our throughput every day for our sites, determining, you know, how many, how many with our weekly allotments, we have to put through site, how many we could push through. And that's how we're arriving at those numbers. And again, another question is what is the maximum capacity for the government, for public health, to administer these vaccines on a daily and weekly basis? So drilling down our stance will be at next week. For planning purposes, we're looking at doing 90 an hour for 765 a day for a weekly total of 3,825. And again, we can push more than that. This is just essentially for planning, but we can do the, hit the 4,000 goal. So 2,000 in, 2,000 out.
And that's, that's what we, that's what we expect to basically have in place, starting next week.
Monday.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, I mean, I think you kind of spoke to this a little bit, but just again, kind of like if, if it plays out such that we really do need to significantly increase our capacity because other parts of the community are gonna do, are gonna do not as much. Do, do you guys feel confident we have the capacity to, like if we needed to, you know, to double that, or if we needed to do three times that much? Is that something that we can ramp up pretty quickly, or is it something that would require fairly, you know, fairly lengthy kind of planning timeframe to staff, train, you know, find more sites, things like that?
Yes, that's a good question. So we have the capacity, even from this footing we'll go to next week, to make some adjustments to, for small incremental, like if, so right now, we know that Pfizer's coming in doses of 975 and the Moderna can be in allotments of 100. So for the time being, any shipment's gonna come in those increments. So that's where that 2,000 benchmark reset was, that co, that covers us in a weekly shipment of either two shipments of Pfizer or up to three times our first shipment of Moderna, which was 700. So that's kind of like our planning goal. We can do some things with shifting hours, if, you know, if we have a small in, increase on top of that. So instead of running that eight and a half hour point of dispensing our fixed site vaccine, vaccine operations, we can extend that to 10 or 12, and then basically break that down to two shifts working that day to give more exposure. That's a easy way we can make a small increase. We're also have, we're planning now to set up potentially one or more drive-through clinics, which again, very similar to how we do testing, which we can set up out the community in addition to the fixed site to give us a few more numbers. At one point, if we do significantly, get a significant increase, we will have to, and we, we've done those measures and we're still, you know, getting more allotments, we may have to either look at a full expansion, making a full second fixed site. Or again, that's where we have the opportunity to do those transfers to community partners and let them relieve some of that burden, give more opportunities for the community.
When we talk about transferring to other organizations, I mean, I think that sounds great. Let's use all the community's assets if we, in expertise if we need them. But I thought earlier, y'all were talking about, like the state is making those decisions about, okay, pharmacies, we give you our blessing, so go forth and, you know. So, but if the county ultimately could, with our allocations, subcontract, we could, we could contract with other companies too, separate from the, whatever state plans are made. Is that what I'm hearing?
So the state must approve a vaccine provider.
Okay.
They must have, be approved through the CVMS portal.
Okay.
And once they're launched as a provider, we have the ability to then transfer to them. So as, once they receive their state approval as a vaccine provider, if we have enough vaccine to share, we can do a transfer.
And for that reason, that gives you a lot of confidence, like this will be able to be scaled pretty quickly. If not with internal capacity, a bunch, presumptively, a lot of different organizations and businesses do have this expertise, will want to be part of this, and we can draw upon them too.
That's correct.
Okay, that's great.
So a follow-up to that, Stacy. So are you having conversations with those providers? And we, we know that they're, that's their intent.
So FQHCs in the area, we've already been talking to them as they get their provider enrollment done and are anticipating getting launched. We've already sort of talked, talked to them. We have other community providers who are very interested. We even have community partners who have sites that if we were able to transfer vaccine to one of our community providers who was enrolled, they would have a site partner. So all of those things are being discussed right now. We just, at this point, our, our vaccine levels are still so low that we have capacity to do ours. And this is something we are thinking about, that as our vaccine supply increases, how could we then, if we get to a, a place that Fletch was talking about, that we've reached our capacity, our first site, do we want to open up a whole nother site, or do we want to then transfer that vaccine and allow that provider to go out into the community and create another opportunity?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And with, all with the hope that they will also be receiving their own direct vaccine allocation as well. But it's likely that they will get enrolled first, launched first, and may not receive a direct allocation at, at that time. So it might be, it might take longer for them to get a direct allocation. That's where the, the provider tran, the transfer comes in play.
Because this supply sheet could change really quickly, right? I mean, the, the incoming administration's talking about 100 million vaccines within, within 100 days, which some people, you know, debate whether that's gonna be realistic or, or not, but still, that's a huge number, right? So we could go from 1,000 to, I mean, there could be tens of thousands arriving within the county, potentially fairly soon, if there, if those numbers are anywhere in the right neighborhood of accurate.
Yes, all of that's dependent on what federal administration decides to do. And if that increase does happen, then those provider, that type of vaccine transfer is exactly what we would be looking at in addition to, do we need to stand up another site?
Just if we could stay here for a second. It feels like one of the lessons we've learned from the period since March is that the count, the the county is often best positioned to play that role of being nimble and expanding capacity and going to where the gaps are, even if it is not traditionally part of the county's jurisdiction to do so. And I, I, I guess I'd like to stay here a little bit as we do, I know you all have been deep in scenario planning. And I'd just like to pause a little bit more on this question of sort of what are the assumptions that have, upon which this sort of capacity question has been based? For instance, if, I just, if we were to make a decision in the county to say, our goal is that the county will scale up as much as we need to, as soon as supply is available, until we see other capacity exist. That's a different approach than saying we will methodically expand to a set capacity that we're determining now, and we'll kind of wait to see what happens both on the supply side and the private sector side of things, if that makes sense. Assuming there's a runway involved with scaling up. So assuming if, if, this is all hypotheticals, but if we were to say, we want to be positioned to scale up as much as we need to, to ensure that whatever the supply is, it can be delivered quickly to Bunkham County residents. That's a different posture than we're scaling up to this watermark. And we can scale incrementally if we need to, but we're really rolling the dice, excuse me, or we're, we're assuming that all the things that are being sort of promised are gonna be delivered upon. And I just think that's a I, I'd like to drill down a little bit on sort of where the, where that decision rests, I guess, and at, or we had a juncture at which that's a conversation we should be having. And understanding a bit more about the sort of timeline of that runway. So that if, if the decision were, actually, we want to scale as much as we need to, what, how long would it take, like what would be involved in doubling the number of staff, for instance, or the kinds of things that would be required for that? I think, to me, that feels like the central decision. You all are doing excellent job of implementation and, and the technical side and the medical and the community side. But at the level of sort of what is the county's posture in this moment, that feels like the question that's on the table, or one of the questions that we ought to be engaging with. Similar to the, the questions and discussions we had around testing. And as, as there were testing shortages, and this question is, well, what role has the county historically played? What role should the county play in this moment? And I know those were, it was a challenging process to navigate, but it feels to me like we're at sort of a similar juncture in some ways.
So it's sort of like, it seems like to be, to make sure this can be successfully executed on, we need to definitely have a plan where the county could ramp up our own internal capacity to get done what needs to be done. If it, if other private sector partners emerge who could clearly, you know, add value, do it more efficiently, you know, already have a lot of infrastructure in place, that would be superior to us doing it internally. But it does kind of seem like we need to make sure, it does, it seems so much uncertainty about what others might be able to do right now, that we need to, we need to be prepared to do as much as we can ourself, just because we, that's the only thing right now, it kind of feels like it's within our control, you know?
Anything we can do to avoid delay, because it's, it's all about speed at, at, at this point, you know, so, yeah, I agree.
Do you guys have any other thoughts on, on the kind of internal versus, you know, kind of the internal versus contracting out, or the, the right combination of that? I mean, just in light of, in light of, you know, there's a lot of unknowns, but those are big fundamental questions about doing things directly versus what percentage we might need to bring in contracts with other, others on.
Right. So I, I, I'll, I'll work through that and answer that by looking at the next couple of questions. But I think, I think that's the heart of it. The, the, whether if we're ready, if we want to expand, be able to have that capacity ourselves, or whether we're gonna plan on setting that threshold where we start doing that transfer to other providers. I'm gonna, and I, I think the slide after this, when we start getting into staffing for those sites and what that requirement is and how that breaks down. So by what date would the county be prepared to reach that maximum capacity for vaccines? So currently, this current space we're in allows us to do 4,000 per week. That's, that puts us in, so Monday with the additional staff we have coming in, we'll be able to do that. January 18th, we will also begin our first week of doing both first and second doses. So that, again, subtracts from our capacity. We're doing new doses and the second round for those who had it in the weeks prior. So currently, the county's currently preparing sites, potentially the AB Tech and potentially Sears or some other drive-through site. How many sites, or how many can we do a week, daily and weekly? I think we addressed these a little bit. But the tools, a, a single site, you know, for 4,000, and then a additional site for potentially another 2,000 a week. And me, I want to skip forward to address your question with the, here we are. How many staff are required to operate each site at these operations? So this is the stance we'll be in next Monday for the full staffing for 4,000 capacity. As you can see, there's, there's 56 staff in total. And that, that little square off to the side is for our mobile operations. So that, that's the footprint we'll be in next week. And this is again, this is public health staff, this is emergency services staff. It's a couple of sheriff's deputies. It's a handful of medical licensed volunteers. And in addition to that, public health staff, some of those are con, currently contracted staff. This next slide shows the breakdown of who is kind of like a general function on the left, and on the right, who has a specified skill set. And whether that's a medical skill set, law enforcement skill set, some kind of logistics skill set or, or resources. And to be honest, what we found out on the left, registration is put under there. Those are some contracted staff we have doing registration. But as we've seen with the CVMS system, it really is a learned skill set to be able to navigate that. So really, if I was gonna reassess this, I would put those, that registration staff under a skilled position. So just the breakdown between who's kind of like general, move people, move stuff staff, and who's a specified skill set for that footprint. So going back one slide, to set up another site, in addition to the physical location and equipment, it would be another, potentially 56 persons to staff a second site. And finding a suitable location that is accessible to public transportation, which has parking loops or park, parking lots available. It's somewhat centralized. It's also part of that equation.
Hey, we're trying to process a lot of numbers really quickly here. So if it just, could you summarize on that list of the, of the 56 folks, like again, how many of those are really like professional medical staff?
Right. So I'll, I'll break it down on this slide. Professional medical would be the educators, who are traditionally some kind of RN. Medical are our medical doctors to provide medical evaluation. The observers are EMT or usually a paramedic. Vaccinators are, right now, registered public health nurses, but in the future can be paramedics, nursing students, or other kinds, people with some kind of health certification. Clinic support isn't necessarily a medical based, but, but maybe one of our nurses. And then that's it as far as medical requirements. The other requirements, or, or, and for pharmacy staff, who are s, s, some sort of licensed pharmacist or advanced RN. And then And then, and then the other requirements for specified skills are either because they have a skill set, or they have access to equipment or resources or databases that are required for a function of that site.
If we needed to stand up another site or sites, you know, assuming that there's funding either appropriated by us, or we get federal funding or wherever the money comes from, are we confident we could actually recruit the skill, the number of people we would need to replicate this? Because, you know, these are all professions that are in high demand right now, right? So do we feel good about that, or is that a concern that even if the financial resources are there, could we literally get enough people in those spots to?
So I, I could speak to that a little bit by individual roles. So our vaccinator pool, we think we have an ever-growing group of vaccinators. We know we have, apart from the public health nurses we're using now, we potentially have hundreds of EMTs in the county who can be leveraged through that position. We know we've had some nursing groups and other medical groups reach out to volunteer. So the vaccinator, which is the biggest draw from this group, we think we have those resources on hand, it can be applied. As far as we do, you know, we need to have actual PhD doctor or doc, medical MD doctors on site. We currently have some of those volunteering to augment Dr. Mullendor, and we have a growing pool of that as well. And I thi- I think if we put out the call, we would have those doctors available to us. Where I do think, you know, as far, as far as the rest of it, just having the support staff, those, those educators and observers, I think, again, those are kind of, those are county EMTs and paramedics, if they're flexed accordingly and we prioritize this, we can cover down those, because those can kind of pull, plug multiple staffing roles for us, between the educator, the observers, pharmacy, even vaccinators. So I, I think we could step up with this, but a lot of this staffing, unless we're, and this is a question really for Avril, is whether we would pull this from other county resources, continue to do that, or whether we, you know, contract that out, and that, that, you know, that have different financial implications.
One question I have around the, the assumptions that I'm putting into this data is, I assume this is built around what we know about the Moderna and Pfizer vaccine. And hypothetically, if, you know, Johnson and Johnson were approved, something like that came down the pike, would that change any of this, any of these needs in your eyes, or do you not want to answer hypothetical questions like that, or?
For right now, we're planning on everything having a two-dose vaccine regimen. And, you know, the three to four weeks separation, so fundamentally, I don't think that changes. Even if there was another vaccine that had the two doses, I, I think this is still the same. It's fundamentally, the process of doing a point-of-dispensing for a syringe injection-based vaccine, it's fundamentally simple and doesn't change. It's just, it's the scale of this which makes this one complex and the speed at which we're trying to do it. And also not knowing week to week how much we have, makes it very difficult to plan.
Continue with the questions. So securing staff. Oh, yes.
Sorry, I know it's hard with me, not there. I do have one re- one request. I think it would be helpful for us to see what it would cost to scale up, so that we could be prepared to make that decision, even when the time comes to do so.
I think we.
Obviously not expecting you to answer that tonight.
Right, and we, we have, in general, the numbers of the, the cost of this site going forward, so it would essentially be doubling that. I think, and I do, I do want to take a moment to point out what a great partner AB Tech has been in providing this location to us. It, it meets so many of our needs, and it's such a fantastic location for our operations, we're really lucky to have that. And I think one of the biggest hurdles and obstacles for setting up a second site would be finding a comparable site, as I mentioned earlier, that's somewhat centralized, easily accessible on public transportation routes, has a good parking, traffic loop system. And what kind of costs might be associated if we're going after that kind of site. We're still working with the Sears site, encountered some hurdles with that, but we're working through, hopefully do a site survey later this week and continue that assessment, maybe not for a indoor-based site, but at least a vehicle-based site. And but we're continuing to pursue other options. But I think if we do determine the need for this, plan for a second site, that's one of the biggest hurdles, probably more so than staffing, is location.
Thanks, Blanche, I appreciate that.
And this is a question that has come in later in the PowerPoint. But when you're talking about the staffing and the dollar amount, we do know, and I've talked to you guys about using some of our COVID money that we currently have, that's about four hundred thousand dollars, and that is what we intend to hire some of the staffing that you're talking about for future expansion. So we've talked with emergency services, and he's not here now, but Taylor has asked, make sure that we can get some of the paramedics, which would be the hardest part for us to staff up and get. AB Tech is currently running a paramedic's class, and they're close to graduating. So we're hoping to get some of those in stamps that we could hold on to and have that staffing level. Because as you mentioned, a lot of these positions are currently filled with paramedics. So they're, they're the ones that also have to respond to a heart attack or drive the ambulance where we need that, so we need to backfill that as well. So some, some of the money that we'd be using for that COVID would be to hire paramedics that can be available to either do vaccine, do testing, or drive our ambulances. So that's a thought that we're already working on and working with AB, with the people in AB Tech's class now that we can hold on to some of those folks when they graduate.
I think we adjust this question about capacity and how much time to assemble and train staff that will be needed for future. I think plans use, utilize volunteers. So we've been using volunteers for this response for a long time, specifically for vaccination purposes since week one. We're using both medical and non-medical volunteers for both the medical assessment onsite, for the mobile vaccinator team going out to those long-term care facilities, and as you know, our general staffing at the site, the greeters, the triage, et cetera. Any individual who volunteers does have to complete volunteer forms and a background check and a drug screen, according to the county policy. School of Pharmacy students and preceptors will also be joining these efforts in the, later in the spring, maybe in a couple of weeks. I do want to point out a program we've had in place now for four years, building up specifically to an event like this, is a very great partnership with the UNC Eschleman School of Pharmacy at UNCA. For the last four years, my preparedness program has been running pod exercises in January with different threats, anything from anthrax to measles vaccine to pandemic influenza, specifically for this kind of scenario. And that, the whole idea with that was to create this roster of pharmacy student volunteers who, in the event of pandemic, would be on hand to augment our workforce, and we're, so we're going to see that come into fruition here in a couple of weeks. And but we are looking for skilled volunteers specifically for the medical experience, who in a, who are able to commit multiple days a week for a prolonged period. One concern we do have about volunteers is, especially for this scenario, if, if we vaccinate a certain number, we have to have a commitment three or four weeks later to be able to vaccinate that same number again. So we can't have short turnaround of volunteers, as we've seen for other efforts, where maybe they could get a couple of days in, or another volunteer for a week. It really has to be a prolonged commitment, and we're, we're working on a plan to put out, to make, kind of specify the requirements we would have for volunteers for that need. This is another question about the volume of vaccines and how long it would take to get to that goal for vaccination. Talked about how the goal would be seventy percent, and again, similar answer to the one previously. It's really hard at this point in time to determine how long it would take to get to that percentage point. Again, some variables, we don't know what would rate the federal supply to the states will expand. We know messaging from the incoming administration is they want to open up, but they've been holding back those, that fifty percent for the second dose. They may be releasing that for a big push. We don't know the schedule for advancing through phases, there's been some on, you know, that's constantly changing. We don't know how, in the end, how many community providers will be enrolled, and then again, once they're enrolled, if they will get vaccine, and then if they do get vaccine, how large that allotment of vaccines will be to them. And again, we don't know what, to what degree the mission system will be able to support us once they're done with their initial charge of their own staff and employees. And we don't know over time how our sentiments towards the hesitancy to the vaccine will change. What we're hoping, what we've seen a little bit so far, is as we continue our education campaigns, and Stacy Wood has developed, who's leading our joint information center, has developed a very comprehensive and equitable communication strategy. We, we hope that as that continues to push out through the community, we'll see some reduction in hesitancy. And we also hope that a lot of people, as they see their friends and neighbors vaccinated, will kind of alleviate some of their fears. I know, I know, anecdotally, we hear from people that they're, they want to get the vaccine, they just don't want to be in the first round. And for some people, first round means wait a week or two, for some people, first round might mean, you know, wait eight or ten months. But we just do want to take this opportunity to emphasize, you know, the vaccines are very safe, they've been vetted. There's a lot of miscommunication that they were, they were rushed, which it wasn't a fast turnaround, but these vaccines were kind of vaccines that have been development over years that were able to be repurposed. So just want to emphasize that they are safe, and to get our community back to normal, is the faster we can get to that fifty percent and seventy percent by vaccine uptake, the faster we can, you know, get back to what, you know, stop wearing masks and have our, you know, restrictions on our gathering sizes, the faster that comes.
So the, you know, it may not, with, with the unknowns we have, it may not be really possible, you know, do this right now, but it seems like in terms of scenario planning, I guess, what I'm trying to understand with this is like, if the supply of vaccines were not a constraint, let's just say there were plenty of vaccines, all, all we, we could, we had all of them that we need to administer to people. And then we just start looking at the other constraints, right, which is the logistical constraints, the sites, the staffing and stuff like that. So I'm not asking for this for tonight, because I realize we're still working, you know, this is still developing and we're going to learn more. But I guess my hope is that in the, as soon as we can, we can kind of start having clear sense of that there's a, a clear pathway, like you're saying, to quickly get to that seventy percent level if the supply constraint is addressed. And then to make sure we don't then have some other constraints that really end up causing this to take a lot longer than we're going to want to have it take.
Right, and I, I understand that, and the issue is, for that plan and purpose, right now, we would be basing that rate, you know, basically on two sources, HCA system and public health. And until we know what other providers we're able to provide, we just don't know what kind of rate the community can receive at. But as, as we know those providers come online, we'll account that into our planning efforts.
Is it, is it possible to just realize they've got to get certified by, through a state process, but, and maybe there'll be some surprises. Maybe there'll be some groups like, hey, we didn't really think about this group maybe playing a role in this, that, you know, come out of the, come out of the woodwork and, and participate. But we do know some of the likely, you know, actors, right? So you mentioned that we're already having some conversations, but would it make sense to just, you know, kind of really, kind of, let's make a list of everyone we think is likely to have the capacity to do this, probably is interested in, even as we're waiting on the state to certify them, really try to get as much information as we can about, okay, you know, here's what, here's what the county's doing now, here's what we think we can do, what do y'all think you can do? So that, i- it won't be for sure until the state signs off and other things emerge. But can we start getting kind of a greater sense of what that community logistical capacity might be?
So in many ways, that's already occurring, particularly with the groups that we convene already, like the safety net providers. So particularly when you're talking about being able to vaccinate a community and have equitable, equitable access in, in many locations, that's where your community providers come in. Your question earlier, like, if we had no restraints and we had all the vaccine we wanted, then not only would health departments be doing it, but medical homes, like your FQHCs, your urgent cares, your primary care providers, like, folks who already have established a, a relationship with our community, and they're trusted, and they know where to go, that's where we, you know, we want them to have that access as well. So these discussions are happening not only for, for those, particularly those FQHCs who might be the next ones to be launched, but our safety net providers in general, what are their interests? So those are folks who are going to be providing for uninsured or underinsured individuals. And we're also having that conversation with our hospital partners about what does that look like? That happens regionally every week as well. So the, some of those conversations are already happening, a formal list has not been created about who, you know, what providers would do what. But those conversations are, are occurring. And as I said, you know, the hope is that more providers get enrolled and would actually get their own allocation directly from the state and could be either mobilizing in their, in, in a community as a pop-up site or through their own medical homes as a, as an option. And that's how we get that blanket of opportunity and blanket of locations within our community. It can't just be one site at the health, you know, that the health department or emergency management is doing.
Based on what we know about the process, you know, from doing it ourself at our site and, you know, other sources of information, is it your sense that assuming places get certified, get vaccines from one source or another, like the retail pharmacy locations throughout the community are likely to be places where?
That's the assumption.
They should be viable sites to do administration of vaccine shots.
That's the assumption, that those vaccinating pharmacists would also be, that would be approved providers, absolutely.
Brownie, I, I think this is the, definitely the correct answer to the question here, we don't know. We just don't have enough information to know, but I think another, again, just sort of at like the high level of how we're processing this, another way to think about this is that, and I'm doing math on the fly, which is always a bad idea, but that if we wanted to hit that seventy percent with everyone getting, the hundred eighty-three thousand getting those two shots within calendar 2021, we'd have to do thirty thousand shots a month. If we wanted to get it by, within six months, we'd have to do sixty thousand shots a month. So that doesn't answer this question, but I think it helps us begin to conceptualize the rate of delivery that we'd have to achieve to do this within one calendar year. If, if that's not correct, it would be helpful to know, but for, at least, again, I think we have to think about how our community is processing this. And, and a lot of folks want the granular details, and then a lot of folks, I think, are just trying to sort of get their heads around what's the nature of the challenge we're facing in Buncombe County? And what's sort of, what are the different sort of through lines through which we're approaching this? So i- is, if any of that's incorrect, please jump in and let me know, but, I mean, are those the kind of numbers that you all are thinking? Okay, that's what we'd like to be hitting, or are we thinking actually what we're talking about is a two-year timeline before we could? I, I understand there's a lot that's not known, but.
I, I think that is the kind of numbers we're, we're looking at, and we'll go back to one of these slides real quick. Around that, you know, thirty to forty thousand a month, and then the capacity at our one fixed site is, is, from public health alone, is about fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand a month? And then that's where we look to rely on these providers to co- cover that other, you know, twenty to thirty thousand remainder. And again, this is all theoretical on paper, we don't know if we'll ever get remotely that number of vaccines yet.
Understood.
And, and just to, right, to, but obviously, it's highly desirable to do it as fast as we can. So really, the goal would be to get to that seventy percent number and to get to as much of it earlier in the year rather than later in the year, right? Like, if we can get to a big percentage of that by within six months, then the pandemic will end, right? I mean, to a large degree, right? So that's, I mean, that's how folks are all thinking about this, right?
Yeah, we want to push it out as fast as we can.
I know we're jumping in a lot, you, you going to keep plugging away on this?
Yeah. All right, so there's a question, please describe the county staff leadership that's planning this and will coordinate the vaccination program and the role. So this is our, based off of I-C, incident command system structure, just for your review. Stacy Sanders is our deputy incident commander, running Vax Operations. Our, our, I'm, I'm the operations chief, we have a logistics chief, Brittany Curtis, who, I do want to give a shout out, she was doing a fantastic job. Really, the reason public health is looking so good right now is emergency services supporting us with these logistics behind the scenes. Our plan chief, Angela Edford, also at emergency services, and finance, Lisa White. Stacy Wood managing our, our communications with, as our public information officer, still running the joint information center. Taylor Jones, emergency services director, as a liaison to that agency. We were adamant about putting in the equity team into the command structure. One, one of our founding goals for this effort is to make sure it's done equitably. And then from there, and of course, you know, this is, this is. And, and then from there, and of course, you know, this is, this is just the incident management core structure, but there, there's many more people involved in making this a success.
So this question's getting at that we have very few vaccine, our supply is still quite low. We have a large population in Phase 1B Group 1 and asking to describe the process to make a reservation to receive vaccine. And so depending on the vaccine supply, you know, this can be the, some of these pieces, like the number of appointments that are put out into the schedule can be much larger. But at this point, calling the 5,000 number and then prompted to a schedule or online at buncomready.org, the surge staffing, right now, we have the ready team answering those calls and the demand is really high, so we've had to surge that staff. And we have about 18 now answering those calls after that surge with another request for 20 contract staff to help out with those calls and scheduling. Who, and that team is also, that is a multifaceted team. Not only do they do the scheduling for the vaccine, they do the scheduling for the testing and call the negative, call the results for the testing. And so there, that team has to be expanded to meet the need that we're having right now. And just a reminder that even with a perfect phone system and a perfect online scheduling system, there is still not enough vaccine. And so there will still not be enough appointments just yet for all of the folks who want vaccine in Phase 1B Group 1. So we are asking for folks to be patient, to be understanding with that process. To Commissioner Newman's point, if, if we had our pie in the sky, we'd have vaccine for everybody who wanted it. We are not there yet, and we are continually trying to refine this system to make it as easy and accessible as possible. And this is just more on that, I think the next couple of slides are around the scheduling piece. And we're temporarily using for the, so for the online portal, we're temporarily using the bookings tool for scheduling. And with that, on our website, you click on the link, you choose your appointment, you receive confirmation. We know that there are intermittent issues with that notification, that IT is actively working on trying to figure out what, what is happening there. And I just want to say it's likely that, you know, bookings is not built for this type of function, not as robust as what, what we would be desiring. But IT and public health staff periodically troubleshoot that and are sending out the, the workaround now is that we've created manual confirmations when the, once we identified the problem. We are switching to the MD, the CureMD online scheduling portal for vaccine once approved. So update, as we were coming into today, is that as of today, that our IT and our legal teams have reviewed that contract and have approved that. So now we start to work on the actual logistics of getting that into our, our hands and in, built into our system. We are working on a plan to switch over to that tentatively next week. That is subject to the builds that have to happen, the logistics that have to go behind the scenes to get that in there. When that does, when that switch does occur, that will all happen on the backend, so the public facing piece will not change. So the public won't see it as a different type of tool, it will, it will still be a, a link on our website. But once they're in there, the scheduling piece will look a little different. And the next question is about if people wish to, or have interest in getting a vaccine, what are the various ways that the county communicates to the public? And new, as new appointments are opened, current notification methods are our website messages updated, our phone messages updated, the county newsletter is updated, social media, press release in the media outlets. We are trying to hit it as much as, in many different ways about when we have appointments and when we run out of appointments. This again is about registration. As vaccine is available, individuals can call to register or register using the online portal. We are scheduling appointments two weeks out at this point with a minimum of 500 appointments each week as our supply increases and we see that consistently stabilize or get more. That 500 can be expanded to more available appointments at a minimum. And then when we receive our notification, as we mentioned earlier, when we receive that notification of our next week's shipment, we can open up additional appointments at that time. Once all the appointments are filled, the message changes on the website and the phone message that appointments are filled and that more will open when available vaccine arrives. And exploring additional options for notification. We recognize that it's not a perfect system and the demand is quite high. So we're trying to get information out as quickly as we can. We just want to reiterate that, and we will not have sufficient supply of vaccine for a, a very long time. So it is likely that we will still can, still hear frustration and concerns about being able to get an appointment because there's just not enough vaccine to go around at this point.
Stacy, can I ask a question about that, on that one? So are we aware of any places or has the, has the staff thought about the idea of, I mean, right now, people can go to the website, try to get a spot, try to get a, call in, try to get a spot. Sorry, yeah, sorry, thanks, I'll talk into the mic. Has there been thought given to a concept where people can, you know, if, if, if you're calling in or, or, or using the website and you can't get a spot now because they're so limited, where you could, in essence, kind of put yourself on a list? And then as the vaccine supplies ramp up and the logistical capacities ramp up, whereby the county would then essentially make an appointment for people, you know? And then, and then they would get a follow-up email or text or robo-call or a human being calling them, however it works, basically just informing them, like you're, you've been scheduled for such and such a date. Obviously, such a system would put a lot more on to the county to sort of do that. One potential benefit of it though, I mean, the, 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 the big downside, it seems, of the system that we have now, where people in essence have to try to schedule themselves, is that the vaccine supplies are so low, and that hopefully will improve, but it's going to be that way for a while, you know? The concern is just that for most people, it'll be this experience of every week, every single week, trying to do this again, and, and only a small fraction of the people will successfully get the appointment, right? Because the supplies are so low. So it just, I guess the concern is that that is, we can urge patients and we certainly will, nothing will, you know, some of this is just outside our control, but I guess just requiring people to go through that process week after week after week and being unsuccessful is just, obviously, it's going to be really frustrating for folks. So have we thought about maybe a process of where people can get on a list and then they get scheduled? So they don't have to kind of treat, keep trying over and over and over again?
We've discussed it and received some feedback today, you know, from some good feedback about our own site, comparing it to a site that did use that wait listing, where it was not turning out so well. And so the wait listing piece where we call back creates a very long list where as we open into new phases as well, people get pushed even further back, right? So you're creating a queue that creates just even more of a backlog. And as we move into having more vaccine, maybe things will change with the requirements with having CVMS register upfront versus on the backend, particularly if we get enough vaccine and we're opening into phases that are much bigger. We would like to start to see that mass vaccination, in its truest sense, that folks show up, we register on-site and would be able to do it that way as well. Then, then you've created a list, whereas folks could just show up at a site. And that's the hope, if we get enough vaccine, that you won't have to have all of these very tedious and logistical types of things right now. The reason we have those in place is because there is not enough vaccine, we have to control sort of how it comes in, how we get people in, because there's just not enough to go around. And so we've explored it, we've started this process with the online scheduling, with the phone system. It's only been in place for a few days. And, you know, once, once the appointment is made, things are working fairly well and the, the, the site is working very well. And so really, it comes down to that supply piece, which is we don't have control over that. Creating a, we've, we've discussed the, the waitlist and it does have logistical burden to it, to already administrative pieces that the staff are already doing and with the, with the back sites.
Do you have any, do we have any recommendations for the public that assuming that they have, you know, computer or internet, to use the online portal versus making phone calls just in terms of maybe for, like which one is going to be a friendlier process? Or maybe kind of lighten the overall load on the, on the whole system? Are we encouraging folks to use the portal if they can, or we're sort of, whatever people prefer is fine?
Of course, yeah, so if you are able to, if you have internet access and can use the portal, absolutely use that. We do have the phone line available for folks who do not have internet access or do not have consistent access to in internet where they can access the, the website. And those two options are available. Again, as we move into CureMD, the hope is that some, with, at least with the second dose, that we'd be able to schedule it on-site and that, that would relieve some of that anxiety and burden of like having to do that again and also relieve some of that burden on the administrative pieces as well.
Are you aware of any models of equitably limiting the number of people who could book an appointment? Like if you could only book an appointment if your month, if you were born in January and February?
I am not aware of any of those models right now.
Because that seems like the one other, I, I'm not either, but that seems like the one other way that you could approach this during this period of such low supply, is trying to equitably reduce the number of people who would be, would be trying to access the system. I don't know if there's an answer to that question, but that seems like one other thing to explore.
I'll take it back and we'll look into it. I think at our last meeting, and someone had, one of you had asked about particularly help with transportation. We did reach out to Dogwood Health Trust to discuss the potential support of transportation for individuals in, in the way of vouchers or other support. The foundation has shown interest in currently coordinating a meeting to further discuss what that might look like. This one is about a particular group and where they might fall. And again, I just want to refer folks to the vaccination prioritization plan and the deeper dives, knowing that the Department of Health and Human Services clearly puts on that vaccination plan that it is ten, you know, it is tentative, it is subject to change. And for, for folks who believe they might be a direct care provider or a frontline essential worker, I would encourage folks to look at the deeper dive Phase 1B document that starts to outline that a little bit more, but also subject to change as they refine those definitions and provide more examples. This question is referring to vaccine availability for those who are 16 and younger. And so currently, students 16 years and older are included in Phase 3 of the vaccination plan as it is stated now. Those younger than 16 years will be vaccinated only when approved for them to receive that. And that, that approval has not yet happened.
It is, it is anticipated that it will happen though.
As more studies are done, so as they continue to study the, the vaccine trials with younger populations.
And do you know any timeframes around when those studies are expected to?
I do not.
I mean, it's a huge question, right, for schools?
Yes, but they currently are being, so both, both vaccine trials that have been approved so far, or both vaccines that have been approved so far are looking at younger populations. For this question, it looks, it looks like maybe not everything got transferred over. So this is the question earlier about how does the state formulate how much they're going to give to each county? And so initially, it is based on the state allocation from the federal government. So once they, once the state receives their notification of what the federal government is going to give them, they then look at what the allocation must be to the federal program for the long-term care facilities and take that off the top. Then they look at each county's burden of the population of the phase that we are in. And so with Phase 1A, that was healthcare workers critical to COVID care. And clearly, more hospitals got that, that vaccine allocation as most of, many of those healthcare workers were in that setting. And then allocation was given to some local health departments in that first week. So initially, essentially, they're working off of that same type of calculation each time, which is how much do they have to give the long-term care facility, federal program? What is the burden within each county of the phases that we are in? And then dividing that up between hospitals and health departments. Going forward, that was initially how they did it. Going forward, they will be looking at how much of your CVMS inventory of vaccine has been pushed out. So again, an incentive not to hold anything back, to get it out as quickly as possible. So they'll be looking at the, the shipments that we have received, what has been inventoried, what has been administered and how much you have left in your inventory per CVM, CVMS. So just, this was about the second doses. Just a reminder that Moderna's 28 days, Pfizer 21. The week of January 18th, we begin the second dose of Moderna for folks who received their first dose in those first weeks that we were doing vaccine rollout. Individuals will receive a reminder from CVMS about a week prior to their second dose. For those first Phase 1A folks, will be following the same procedure we did for their first dose, with that was that bulk upload. Those are, we had good census data essentially, not true US census data, but provider census data of like who are these providers? And we're able to bulk upload those groups. So we have already begun to email those provider groups with a link for scheduling the second dose. And, you know, going that way. And for Phase 1B Group 1, those groups for their second dose will be using the phone line or the online system since we don't have CureMD yet. But once we are able to switch over the ideas that they would be getting their second day's dose scheduled at the time of receiving their first dose. So the link on buncomready.org will say you can schedule your vaccine. One, one area will say, are you scheduling for first dose or are you scheduling for second dose? Once the first dose is clicked, they'll be able to, to schedule an appointment. Second dose is clicked, then they can choose whether they're getting Moderna or Pfizer. And as I said, as the CureMD tool is launched, we can begin scheduling that second dose at the time they get their first dose. This is a question regarding the long-term care facilities that the county is responsible for. We've touched on this a, a bit already. Not all of them have been, not all of them have received their vaccines yet as of today. We received a list of 90, we assigned our coordinator to reach out to those long-term care facilities on the list. We found that some of them were actually on the federal list, so that 90 went down to the upper 70s. Found that some were covered by the CVM, CVS and Walgreens, some declined vaccine, others began to get scheduled. We're using our mobile vaccination team for this population. We deployed last week, vaccinated 110, as Fletch said earlier, and scheduled to vaccinate about 330 in this population this week. And so as we think about rolling out all the shipment that we get of vaccine, we always have to think about this group until we've completed them and make sure that we reserve some for them.
Quick clarification, for folks watching us at home, can you, I guess, describe briefly what it means for a facility, an elder care facility to, to, to decline vaccination? It's not, it's not the facility making that decision for the patients themselves?
No, it's not, and so these long-term care facilities that are on that list vary greatly as to what their form and function are. 100% of our skilled nursing facilities are enrolled in the CVS and Walgreens program. So many of these long-term care facilities that we're charged with range anywhere from having only like six beds to maybe 50 or plus beds. We do have one quite large one that I think got vaccinated today, it's our largest one. And so for some of these smaller long-term care facilities, they are polling their patient, they're polling their residents and their staff. And if they find that none of their residents want it and none of their staffs want it, that none of their residents want it and none of their staffs want it, then they're declining. And, and we document that on our form that they have declined that service. Some of them, it varies that some of their residents and some of their staff want it and not, not all. So not unlike the general population. And then we have some who are all staff and all residents want it. And so it varies greatly with those. This is a question that is getting at the outreach and how do we, what strategies do we have for those who aren't as tech savvy? So information is being shared with print and TV media partners. We're continuing to do our Media Days, which are also for those who are tech savvy and can do Facebook and streaming live, but also allowing our media partners to, to come to site. And we do media there so that it's in our newspapers and on our TV news broadcast. Joint Information Center team has sent information to our community stakeholders to assist in getting information out to different community groups. Individuals can use the phone option or online to schedule appointment. Caregivers, friends, again, I just want to reiterate this, caregivers, friends and support people can make those appointments for an individual. It does not have to be the individual who makes that appointment, if that is, if that eases their access. This one is comprehensive list of agencies that are providing vaccinations. At this time, only, only public health and the hospital. Public health is providing it to the general population. And a hospital is still working on their 1A. And again, just to reiterate that the Department of Health and Human Services is launching some FQHCs and other providers this week and into the next few weeks. But it's not anticipated that they will receive a direct allocation once they're enrolled. That may, might take more time. But again, if they're, if they're an eligible enrolled provider, they may receive a vaccine transfer from another provider. This again is about communication and media. So we are using websites, social media, media outlets, continuing to tweak those webpages and those prompts, continually refining the process for making an appointment. The online schedule again is not, the, the schedule that we're using is not as robust and not intended for this function. So we are finding little intermittent issues or little bugs. And we are grateful for our, our colleagues on our IT team who have been troubleshooting that and working with our team for creating solutions for that and creating workarounds that include that manual push for notification of appointments.
Stacy, one follow, Stacy, one follow-up with that, please. Since, since you're not sure about having people sign up, as Brownie had asked earlier, to be able to then follow up with them, is there a way that they can go ahead and sign up for the alerts or for like the email newsletter? So then if they sign up for those, when you get, when there's the availability of more appointments, will you send something out automatically and that may help those people? So they don't feel like they're having to check every day and call and look? And that may lessen that frustration?
I'm looking at Stacy Wood in the back to see if she wants to cover that. But I'll give it a stab. And the answer is yes, that we do have the newsletter and folks can sign up for that. She did intimit earlier today that that, we are going to expand that subscription for that newsletter as well. So that if they sign up for the newsletter, we have more band, we, we have more subscriptions ready for that. And people can get their information that way. Do you want to cover anything else?
So we have a mass notification system that we're using to communicate about appointment availability. And like Stacy said, they can sign up for the COVID-19 newsletter by visiting the bunkamready.org page and sign up. And we're communicating as soon as appointments open. That's how we're getting the word out quickly.
And that's an email list?
And we just upped our constant contact subscription because we had almost four hundred people sign up just today for the newsletter. So.
Can you speak about the mass notification? Do you need to sign up for that or is that just automatic?
Text BC alerts.
And so you will also automatically send it to that if people sign up for that as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. So there's a, you can get a text, like when on Friday, we get the information, like a text and an email will go out to everyone who's indicated they want to be on that list?
Correct.
Okay, so they don't have to, as Terry said, kind of keep looking, not just every day, but like every ten minutes, you know, of, of the times they think it might be coming?
Text BC alert. I can't remember the, sorry, the, what they're supposed to text to, but I will follow up here shortly with that information.
Okay.
We had a question about what does someone need to bring to the VAC site? And individuals attest at the time of scheduling that they meet the criteria. And at the time of vaccination, individuals should check in with their name. No ID is required, although we do recommend it because it does make registration a bit easier, particularly to make sure that we spell names right and get addresses right. So we do recommend that you bring that with you. So just the same things that you would bring to your doctor's office, your, you know, your ID, insurance card, things like that, that can make it helpful for us. You know, if you, if you believe that you, you know, if you have medications that you're, you know, want to ask the doctor about and if they're a contra indication, bring your list with you. So things that you would normally bring to your doctor's office so that we have all the information that we need to make sure that we can assess you properly and get you to the vaccinator as quickly as possible.
Stacy, I think, or to the other Stacy, it's triple eight, triple seven. You text BC alert to, is that correct? Okay.
You're getting a thumbs up.
Okay. Text triple eight, triple seven, the phrase BC alert. Okay.
Was it eight or A?
Three eights and three sevens. That's the phone number you're texting.
And so there was a question about HCA's Open Pod and eligible to receive all large doses of vaccine. And this really does need to be deferred to HCA. I can't answer, answer that one for you. And this one is our last one. Oh, sorry.
Okay, just on the previous question, so people don't need to bring an ID? And as the different, you know, demographic groups, seventy-five and older, you know, others will change in the future. In essence, we're just going to trust people to like not try to participate in a group that they don't really belong to?
That's right. Yeah. We would really like for folks to honor that and understand that we are trying to get our seventy-five year and older population. And that if you were to do that, to sign up in a phase that is not yours, you are taking that away from a high priority group, a priority group that is higher at risk than, than what you are.
Okay.
Brownie?
Yes, sir.
I was asked to show my ID yesterday. And I noticed most of the people, you know, around me were, yeah.
It does help for registration. So we, you know, it's not required, but we very much recommend it because it does help with registration to be able to get names correct and to get our addresses correct, make sure that we've got all the correct information in there.
And as we get into the later phases, and it's not just ages, but different professions, are we again, going to basically say, folks, you know, we need to trust each other? Like we're not going to require people to prove they work at a grocery store? We're just going to say this is the policy and the vast majority of the people will do the right thing?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, did you?
Before we get into discussing what other resources we need to potentially make available, I do have another question. In the past couple of days since beginning the vaccination process of those over seventy-five, had there been no-shows and what happens to those vaccines when someone doesn't show? Does it just roll into another day? Do you open available appointments? So probably just a two-part question there. What does it look like in terms of no-shows? And then what is the process to reallocate the vaccine?
That's a great question. So very little no-shows. High demand. Very little no-shows. And this is a great question. I will, I do want to commend our folks that, for those of you who visited the VAC site today, we didn't show you sort of the back room where our pharmacists and our nurses are actually pulling up that vaccine and they are doing that very carefully. They are taking note of how many patients we have brought in, how many have checked in, and pulling up enough dosage for what we have in the facility. So we're not constantly pulling up and then at the end of the day, having lots left over. We do not want that to happen. So we are carefully monitoring at the site, how many people we have at the vaccination sites, how many available doses that the nurses have at their stations already. And I will say, you know, at the end of the day, we have had, you know, just a handful of doses that have been left, which, you know, maybe two or three. And what we do there is that we have medical first responders who haven't been vaccinated yet, or vaccination staff who are at the VAC site with us who have not been vaccinated yet, who fit in either 1A or 1B Group 1. And so we're sticking with our phases, but we will not waste a dose and we will give it to one of those people if we have a few doses left over at the end of the day. But we are monitoring that. And I just want to say a big shout out to our pharmacy staff and, and our nurses who are watching that carefully because each one of those, those doses is just so important. So we do not want to waste that. And so I, I want-
Stacy, that sounds really incredible that you're able to monitor it that carefully so as not to waste it. But I'm really impressed that then you're able to find someone close by onsite, first responder, someone in that 1A that hasn't received it yet. So thanks for everyone's hard work on that. I'm sure the details behind that is really difficult. So thanks.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, it is BC alert eight, 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 seven, seven, seven. Yes, thank you, Max. They're showing it on the screen now. So you'll notice that this question was out of number. And we did have a question about, does the county manager have all the resources in hand to implement county vaccination plan? So we saved that one to the, to the end. And I'm going to defer to County Manager Pender for that one.
Before you go, I did have a question that wasn't on the list. And it was about, after you get your vaccine, do you continue to wear your mask?
Yes. Yes. So important part here that we talked about last week too, is that it will take a very long time for us to get to a place where we won't be wearing masks or social distancing anymore. So just because you've gotten your first dose of vaccine does not mean you get to go around without a mask. You must wear your mask. You must keep six feet of distance. You have to keep washing your hands. And that's going to be the case for, for a very good while, while we get vaccine out. All of that is going to still be in place. So thank you for reminding me of that. Yes.
I have, I have a question, just from observation yesterday. What are we doing to make this process equitable?
Thank you for the question.
Because I noticed when I was there, it was me and that's it.
Thank you so much for that. So in 1A, we, we touched on this the last time too, that 1A was so prescriptive that healthcare workers, critical to COVID care, is very prescriptive in a very set sort of population. So a lot of that population is in the hospital and other kind of healthcare settings. As we get into 1B Group 1, we, again, the seventy-five years and older population, still a prescriptive type of group, but working with our community partners to get that information out through our faith-based organizations that we have vaccine for this group now, and urging them to help organize groups that may not have as much access to transportation or access to online services to help them get signed up. As more vaccine is available and we're able to do a provider transfer, also being able to work with those community partners who either have space or also reach other populations that we don't normally reach, to be able to give them vaccine or at least partner, partner them with a community within a neighborhood or within a community center of a historically marginalized population to, to be able to get that. So we are working on that, trying to think through that. I will say that as CDC and ASIP created the initial plan that had the phases of 1B Group 1, twos and threes, and the state adopted that, we recognize that, that the age criteria does not fit all the equity pieces that we want. But the frontline essential workers and the direct care providers starts to get more of that equity lens in there. As we know that many of our frontline workers come from our historically marginalized populations, maybe uninsured. And so as we get into those phases, we're going to be reaching out to those groups even more. But particularly with our seventy-five years and older, really trying to get to our stakeholders to help get that word out, particularly through community groups, our faith-based organizations and other groups. So thanks again for that question. And as I said, the last question is, is for the county manager. So I will defer.
I've got one before we go there. Going back to number, question thirty-four, the twenty-eight days, and then it says four-day grace period, or after that.
Yeah.
In case someone comes ill or something, how much time have they actually got to take second dose?
So we, we set it up for twenty-one and twenty-eight days respective of the actual vaccine. The, once, when the vaccines were approved, there was a grace period allowed. So it's four days prior. That if you were in that window and you had, and it's not quite day twenty-eight, but maybe it's day twenty-six, you're still okay to get your vaccine at that point. So that's what those grace periods are. And then anytime after that. So if you miss your, if you miss day twenty-eight and it's day thirty and you didn't get your vaccine, you can get your vaccine. Like you, you haven't missed your window. You just can't get it any earlier than that grace period.
Hey, I have a couple of, a couple of questions before we turn it over to Avril. Just want to make sure, I'm kind of looking at my notes to make sure I've got some of this right. So the, the current plan is we will have the capacity to do four thousand vaccines a week, starting next week. And that's all going to be basically at the AB Tech site. The AB Tech site will have that capacity. Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. That's four thousand at that fixed site. And, you know, we also are making an allotment of, depending on the week, a couple hundred to go to those mobile teams.
Okay. And you mentioned that there are some potential ways, if we wanted to further bump up the capacity of AB Tech site, there's some potential ways to do that in terms of hours and schedules and things like that. But in essence, if you wanted to really grow it quite a bit more, then in this essence, we might need to think about, where do we do another site similar to AB Tech or to spread it out and grow it? Is that, am I, did I hear that correctly? Like if we wanted to go to eight thousand, we, we wouldn't do all that at AB Tech. We would look at some other sites to try to bring things online.
That's correct. But by manipulating the operation, hours of operation and potentially doing a little small vehicle-based site, we can knock up our numbers. But to truly double a site, we would need a second facility.
But we haven't, we haven't committed to doing a second site yet. We're looking at some options, but we haven't made a definitive decision yet on doing that in light of the vaccine supplies don't, you know, we wouldn't have them to actually distribute yet. And waiting to see how some of these other plans unfold from the state level. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thanks.
But we are working through contracts at our second site. So it's ready to go at this point. So, but we haven't signed a contract yet. But we are working through that.
Great. All right, thank you.
Now, they don't go too far because we had a meeting with Public Health and Emergency Services to look and see what that staffing model will look like so we can put some money and some ideas behind that. So last week, with finance and with budget, and I believe we landed on thirteen new paramedic positions that we would need to have in the hopper, so to speak. And so that is about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars to get us for all the supplies, all the staff and everything that we would need. We need about four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars is the estimate that they gave me that would get us through June thirty. So just figuring out this calendar year is what we're looking at. We happen to have four hundred and eighty, almost four hundred and ninety thousand dollars left over from the Cures money or the COVID Relief Fund. So my request would be to take that money that's already been obligated for COVID and use it to fund this outfit of staff and equipment that is needed. So at this time, the question is asking me, do I have what I have, need in hand? I do for this, rest of this calendar year as it sits today. If the decision is to go to more upscale and let's go to eight thousand or nine thousand or whatever that looks like, we can come back with another request. So I do need some guidance. If, if the guidance would be for us to look, to have eight thousand capacity and not just use our partners, I would need that guidance so we can build that out as well.
Just to kick off the conversation, I would support, take, I would support running the numbers and come, and us being able to see a plan for that more rapid expansion. And based on the conversation we've heard tonight, I would, I would think I would intend to support it. It feels like it would be a very wise use of resources. Hopefully, we'd see the private sector providers come online as quickly as possible. Hopefully, we'll see the supply increase. But anyway, just to kick that conversation off, I look forward to hearing where other people are and their thinking.
I'd second that. Absolutely supportive of finding a way to ramp up. I think our community not only expects it, but we're going to see the demand for it. And I think at this point in time, it's our responsibility to ensure that we can do that to protect our county residents right now.
Yeah, I would totally concur with what Jasmine said in terms of looking at a budget for doubling our capacity to get in that eight thousand range. And again, hopefully, more private sector partners can help us out. But I think being, to not be prepared would be, for that would be a mistake in my mind.
Yeah, that's a no-brainer for me. We need to do it. I mean, we got to. Our constituents are expecting us to prepare for it. And if we want to get to seventy percent, we've got to think that way and prepare for it.
So I agree. Support using the Cares Funding and then also looking at what we would need to do to ramp up.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I'm very ambivalent about how these vaccines get out into folks', you know, arms. You know, it's not, it's not like I just want Buncombe County to be the one doing it. But I just want to make sure that the community does have the capacity that, because I think the supplies will really grow. I mean, it's been much slower getting started than was what was hoped for. But I do think it's going to ramp up quickly. And we don't want, as that limiting factor fades away, we don't want to have other limiting factors that, where there's actually vaccines available in Buncombe County that people can't, can't get. So I'm definitely supportive of looking at that budget plan too. If some of these other state plans really, I mean, as they become more clear, then perhaps we will be able to make a more informed decision around, gosh, okay, look, you know, the private sector is going to be able to do twenty thousand a week and we're good. And we can, you know, we could, we could hold off. But it may be that we need to do even more than this. So I certainly think we should go ahead and like, let's look at the plans to do that and make sure the resources are there to do it if we need to do it. All right. Any other feedback you need from us, Avril?
We would have a plan to you, maybe not, not next week, but by February.
One last question. We talked about the drive-through sites, but just for folks who haven't been to this one site yet, most people who get vaccines will get out of their car and go in to like the AB Tech facility or somewhere. But there might be literal drive-through sites as well in the future where people actually just stay in their cars? I mean, trying to kind of share, like, so people can visualize what this might look like.
Correct. When I was referencing earlier, one option to slightly increase our throughput is those vehicle-based sites. That would be just like the testing sites we've done where people would arrive and stay inside their vehicle the whole time. We think we could get a pretty considerable number through, but not quite a bit fewer than the in-person, just the nature of logistics and having big parking lots. But we can push, we think, a substantial number through a vehicle-based site similar to how we do it at the fixed site.
Thanks, Fletcher.
Just procedurally, is any action required from us regarding the four hundred ninety-six thousand at this point?
No, ma'am. That's the same money that you've already allocated for COVID.
Okay, great. So that's ready to go. Okay, great. Thank you.
And it probably goes into the like unknown category too. But do we anticipate with the national, the second national relief funding that's been approved by Congress, that there will be more funding for Buncombe County and others to apply towards vaccine?
We anticipate that there will be funding for that. We haven't seen any
We can use the Cares Funding we already have, but there might be additional funding too to help us.
That's the expectation.
Great. All right. Stacy, Fletcher, everyone who is here to contribute tonight, thank you. I think we all feel like this is a lot of great information. So thank you all very much for taking time to take a deeper dive in all this tonight. We really appreciate it. All right. So next, I think we're going to turn to discussion around potential additional county support for local businesses and individuals who are facing hardships related to the financial consequences of the COVID pandemic that we're still working through. So Tim Love, I think, is going to kick us off.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. For this presentation, I'll sort of take lead and get us up to speed. But as you have specific questions about any of the existing programs, I wanted to make sure you're aware that in the room, we've got Stoney and Philip Harden, who can speak to specifics about economic services programs like SNAP and WIC and other things like that. With all that said, I'll kick us off. So, you know, the discussion today is about another round of One Buncombe, so additional COVID relief in our community. To get to the point, so, you know, the need in our community is great, and I think we know that. But I wanted to do a little history to remind us kind of where we've been. So, you know, in April twenty twenty, you know, this board took a leadership role and with the support of the greater community, was able to come together with the One Buncombe Fund, which resulted in raising one point four million dollars in donations from individuals, businesses, governments, foundations. And those funds were used for individuals and supported over a thousand individuals with just day-to-day essential needs. You know, payment of utility bills, housing, mortgages, things like that. Additionally, One Buncombe Funds were able to be used to support ninety-five small businesses across Buncombe County. And, you know, those small businesses were able to retain, you know, nearly seven hundred jobs in our community. So I think it's important in this moment to recognize kind of that success. And that was early in the pandemic when this board sought to provide bridge funding as we waited to see what came from the federal and the state level. And I think what we'll find is we're facing kind of a similar situation today. Part of the good news story is that of these small businesses, some have been able to repay their loans, have been making their payments or on schedule. We haven't had any defaults. So that's a really good thing. And because of the nature of the fund, you know, there's funds that have come back to One Buncombe that can be reutilized and redeployed into the community to meet needs. So that's a great story and something that I wanted to recognize as we get into our presentation. That said, the reality is still stark. Unemployment in and around Buncombe County, the city of Asheville, other municipalities, hovers around six percent. That's certainly better than the eighteen percent that we faced early in the pandemic, but it's not good. Additionally, we've seen many of our programs like SNAP and Medicaid experience a spike in applications. You know, SNAP as an example is up twenty-four percent. Medicaid is up seven percent. So the need is clear with individuals in our community. Additionally, the need is fairly clear with our businesses too. You know, businesses have been dealing with lower folks coming in to seek their services. We've seen them deplete their cash reserves as they sort of deal with lower demand, taking on additional debt because many of the sources of funding from the federal and state level have been required to take on debt. But they're also facing a need to pivot. The game is changing for them. Instead of providing services indoor, they're forced outdoor. And sort of, instead of doing things in person, they're sort of doing things online. So there's additional costs that comes with that. So we just wanted to recognize that need, but then pivot and sort of say, you know, what's coming? You know, there is, there is some positivity here. And so I wanted to update the board today and just say, in kind of plain speak, for individuals that need assistance, there's approximately one million dollars in funding that's available today. And so a press release will go out with this information. This relates to the CDBG funding that we've talked about with you before, as well as additional funding from One Buncombe. And so that funding is available today. Constituents tomorrow can go out and if they're struggling with utility bills, struggling with mortgage payments, they can request those services. The way they do that is simple. They call eight-two-eight-two-five-zero-five-five-zero-zero. This is our Economic Services Call Center. It is separate from our other call centers. But they will speak to someone who can help them navigate the system. So if they have a question, call the number. Someone on Philip's team will help you navigate, figure out what you're eligible for. If there's another program that isn't a county program, they'll get you to, they'll get you to that program. So the key takeaway is there's money available today, approximately a million dollars. To seek that funding, call the number eight-two-eight-two-five-zero-five-five-zero-zero, which will put you in touch with a call center of, staffed with, I think, fourteen people that can help get you directed to whoever you need to get to regardless of where you live in Buncombe County. That said, on the small business side, we want to spend a little time there today to talk about potential resources and seek guidance from the Commission on what, if anything, the board would seek to do. We're not seeking a vote today because of the nature of economic development funds. We'll talk through that as we go. One of the things that's become apparent, and I think in the immunization, vaccination discussion, it's apparent, communication is like, you can't put a price on it, right? Knowing where to go, who to talk to, how to get updates is critical. So we believe that it's important to do a communication campaign that is targeted at our individuals, but also targeted at our small businesses. On the individual front, I think it's critical, you know, I've just told you to call the Economic Services Hotline if you need service. But there's also a great resource in the form of two-one-one. This is a statewide program. It's fully funded. They have a call center here in Asheville that's available to answer any questions that individuals have. Just dial two-one-one. They will get you routed to the appropriate resource. So I wanted to make sure that we called that out because, again, it's available. They're up to speed on local programs as well as state programs and federal programs. So a great resource for your constituents. Additionally, on the small business front, I think it's important to continue to get the word out. You know, we know that there's a number of programs that are out there. Maybe they've expired. Maybe they're coming, but we're not sure what to do. A great example of that is the PPP. So our private sector partners like the Chamber of Commerce, Explore Asheville and others are partnering to get on a town hall cycle. That first town hall will occur on Thursday, January fourteenth. For those that are unaware of it, you can access that by going to the Chamber's website. Purpose of that is to talk about the latest COVID advice for businesses. And so that'll include details about the PPP, how do you get a second draw? What is loan forgiveness? All that good stuff. But additionally, you know, as an employer, you know, what are your bounds on requirements around vaccination? Can you require your employees to be vaccinated? That's a legal question I do not care to answer, but that's the type of discussion that they'll have on that town hall. More town halls are coming. We'll continue to publicize that through our distribution channels. But that's one way that we get the word out. Additionally, I think it's important to sort of recognize some campaigns that are going on that are really important. We've talked a lot about restaurants and capacity in recent weeks. There's an ongoing campaign now that we hope everyone will support. Hashtag Keep Asheville Cooking. Quite simply, you know, you want to support your local restaurant. A great way to do that is through takeout, especially considering the capacity restrictions. Additionally, Restaurant Week is coming up. You know, that's normally an event that packs our restaurants locally. So we're encouraging folks during Restaurant Week, you can still, you can still support your restaurants, again, through takeout, or if you're able to do so in person safely, you can do that as well. Here, I've listed a few links as well about resource pages. There's about a million of these in the world. But I wanted to point out three in particular. Mountain Biz Works, the Chamber of Commerce and Explore Asheville. All three have dedicated COVID-nineteen business pages that folks can go check out. And they have slightly different leanings depending on the industries they're supporting, but wanted to call those three out in particular. So communication, get the word out. That said, you know, communication alone may not be sufficient to carry us into this next phase as our small businesses face, you know, what we can reasonably call a lull seasonally here in Buncombe County with the number of folks that are going to restaurants, participating in our other vacation-oriented businesses. So the discussion we'd like to have with the board today is about a small business support model that replicates kind of what we did the first time around with One Buncombe, but adds a couple, a couple new wrinkles. So in terms of eligibility, right off the top, we're talking about small businesses that's currently defined as less than fifty employees. Want to spend a little time on this. We think it's good to have a filter that's higher for fifty employees. But we also want to recognize that in practice, our last round of One Buncombe funding primarily went to businesses with less than twenty-five employees. In fact, I think out of the ninety-five loans, there was only one that went to an employer with more than twenty-five. So in practice, this went to a smaller number of people, but we do think it could be advantageous to cast a wider net, if you will. Something for the board to consider, and you're welcome to give us feedback today, is, you know, within that small business frame, are there areas that we want to focus on? Certain populations, in particular, sole proprietorships or partnerships have frequently been left out when we talk about other types of funding programs at the state or federal level. Additionally, I think it's important to recognize the impact on minority-owned businesses, Black-owned businesses in particular. And so those might be areas where we want to focus this type of funding. Finally, and also very important, in this next round of PPP, where we're sort of hoping for a lot of relief, there are going to be businesses that aren't eligible for PPP. One of the examples of that would be a business, for instance, that decided to open in January or February of twenty twenty. They have the unfortunate reality of just opening at a bad time. And because of that lacking may be the extent of revenues and cash flows that you would want to see as a banker. So I think these are areas that you may want to consider. You may have other ideas as well. You're welcome to share those with us today. Additionally, usage of funds, business operations. Let's keep these businesses open is the spirit of what we're proposing. And to do that, there's a model with two pieces. The first piece would be to replicate One Buncombe from the first round, which is to do low-interest loans up to ten thousand dollars with no payments for a duration of time. In our prior model, we did low-interest loans for about a six-month, no-payment term. We're researching that now with our CDFI to see what we think is appropriate. I think what you'll see from us on the low-interest front is we can't get to zero. But we do believe we can get closer to where PPP is, which is closer to one percent, or the disaster relief loans, which are about three and a half percent. So that's the range we're looking at. We're hoping to be in there somewhere. And we'll bring that back to you in the future if you're interested. In terms of the deferred payments, we are proposing moving to that twelve-month period based on the suggestion of our CDFI. But we'll bring that back to you as a formal recommendation at our next meeting. The new wrinkle to this is a potential grant program. We've talked about this in the past, and we're not able to offer a grant program because of statutory requirements. However, much has changed in the world, and we believe there's a different interpretation of that that I'd like to share with you today. So the quick snippet on that is a grant program up to five thousand dollars to hire employees at a living wage. So we'll talk about that on the next slide, but that's kind of your quick snippet. Our proposal would be to continue to work with Mountain Biz Works. They've been a partner with us and many other counties throughout this program or throughout this year and are ready to roll if the board is willing to do so. If no quick questions on that slide, I'm going to jump into the next one, which is about grants. So the proposed grant program, this is very draft, so I want you to understand that we're still working through the details because we've not done this before. But the purpose would be to preserve and maintain employees, and this is a very important thing. Based on the guidance we've received from the School of Government, we can't have a program that basically funds loss of revenue or allows a business to go dormant for a period and wait it out. That's not something that we can do as a public entity. However, we believe if we draw a very fine line and sort of tie any grants directly to employment, this is for the maintenance, maintaining a specific employee, a specific number of positions, or to hire, even better, folks that are unemployed perhaps, that's the line that we feel like we can follow. The way that we would get there, again, we'd focus on small businesses. And right now, we're saying with less than fifty employees, that could be lowered potentially. But the model would align with the UNC School of Government and their recommended reopen and rehire program. You would need to demonstrate a direct connection to the employment of individuals, and those grants would be up to five K. The requirements to get there, bullet one would be a living wage requirement. You know, if we're offering grants, we want to make sure the jobs on the other side are paid in a way that folks can afford to live here. We would tag that against the Just Economics Living Wage numbers for the most recent year. A parenthetical here is, for those that are familiar with the service industry, folks get an hourly wage that in many cases, when I was a server, was two thirteen an hour. But then that's augmented, obviously, by your tips and gratuity. So we would obviously want to reflect that in our living wage discussion. We wouldn't want, you know, the restaurant industry to not be eligible for this because of that hourly wage. We would want to consider the total compensation, if that makes sense. Additionally, if grants Um, additionally, if grants for direct employment are, are made, there needs to be some type of retention period. And this is similar to the economic development deals that you've heard us talk about out at a grander scale. Um, so how long will you maintain that employee? It can't be for two weeks. We would like to see it for a longer period of time, for instance, six months. You know, maybe at the end of six months, we're at a different phase of the pandemic. So there does need to be a retention period. Um, additionally, we need documentation. So if we establish your baseline at the beginning of a grant as an example of ten employees, we'd like to see documentation through that six month period, through NCUI filings or other filings with the state, payroll filings basically, that show that you've maintained those employees. Uh, this is again, a very similar process that you've seen from us on the economic development front. Again, not, the emphasis not to be cumbersome, but just to make sure that we're documenting a grant process that's new and honestly, not something that we typically do. Uh, the final bullet there, you know, additional discussions underway. We, we, if you're interested in pursuing grants, if you're interested in producing loans, we'd like to bring something to you um at a future meeting uh so that you can sort of formally digest it and potentially approve it. I'll pause there for a minute because I, I've talked a lot. Um, are there any initial questions, comments, thoughts, concerns? I'll keep going. Uh, so you know, the requests of the board, again, this is not, this is not a formal request where we're seeking a vote, but you know, definitely want the board to consider, you know, do you feel like additional funding is needed on the individual front? Um, based on our conversations, you know, we, we have about a million dollars that's available today, which we think will tide us over for a period of time. Uh, we're certainly anticipating, just like our friends in public health, that there's going to be additional relief uh that's coming in the near future. Uh, we have outstanding applications uh for a number of large scale grants um and funding sources, which I won't speak to at this point, but that we anticipate will be announced soon. Um, additionally, on the small business front, uh, if you're interested in pursuing, because this is economic development, fu- uh, because this is economic development, we do have to follow the statutes and there's a required public hearing. And so in order to do a public hearing, we have to notice that public hearing, which is a ten day requirement. So the soonest we would be able to get in front of the board for a public hearing would be February second. So that's the first meeting in February. There's one meeting in between then. Um, I've crunched the numbers on the dates, but in order to meet the statutory requirement, that's where we're at. Um, if you're interested in pursuing this, uh, that public hearing, we, we would ask you to approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh for additional small business funding that could go to loans or grants. Uh, but we would additionally uh combine that with fifty K that's re- remaining in the One Buncombe Fund for a two hundred thousand dollar loan pool. Two hundred thousand dollars is a great start, but doesn't get us as far as we need to go. So on this slide, we're talking about, you know, staff intentions to continue to work with our partners. So we would like to proceed and say that, you know, Buncombe County is, you know, seeding this program with two hundred thousand dollars, but have a, a formal call to action with our partners and local government, our foundation partners and our foundations as employers, or our partners as employers, to get to a target of about five hundred thousand dollars. Um, this number we think is still too low, but we do know and recognize that there's additional uh funding on the way, uh, hopefully for small businesses. And so this would serve as what I'll call a bridge program to get us to those bigger federal state programs that we need to really move the needle. So that's kind of the ask. Um, in terms of next steps, if, if the board seeks to move forward, uh, we would look to schedule a public hearing for February second, and then we would work with Mountain Bizworks to have a, a launch, um, which would be in February twenty twenty-one on the earlier side of that, but I'm, I'm not ready to commit them to a date unless we know where y'all stand, so. What questions do you have?
I think it's fantastic. I, I, one question that came to mind when I used the word, when you're talking about the bridge concept. I guess I'm just trying, I, I'm hoping you can, you can describe what period of time that might last to help the community out. Is that possible to, to tell me?
It, it's hard for me to put a, a firm pin in it. Um, you know, PPP is one of the big programs that we know is coming. And right now, our understanding is banks are still trying to figure out how much money is available and banks are also making the determination, will they offer PPP and if so, to whom? Um, so that, that's a bit of a, a challenge for us. I think we should also expect um a number of grant programs to come through um at the federal and state level, similarly to what happened um in our last round. Uh, many of those grant programs are no longer accepting applications. Um, example would be Retool NC or the NC Mer program. Um, so we're, we're hoping that some of those programs come back online, but we don't know exactly when, so. I wish I had a better answer for you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to acknowledge that Philip, Philip Harden is here and can answer any questions that you have about specific programs, you know, unemployment insurance, the CDBG, anything like that. So if, if you'd like to uh query Philip, he's here.
Great. Um, great job. I think this sounds terrific. I think it's, um, you know, the needs out in the community are really large. This is a modest contribution to the big, in the big scheme of things, but I think it's important for the county to do what we can. And, and um for a lot of local businesses, you know, a couple of thousand dollars can be a total lifeline to help get through, um, you know, the toughest part of this winter and hopefully the last parts of this terrible pandemic. So I'm very supportive of it. I love, really like the fact that we're going to try to work with some of our partners again to try to get the number up as well. So it's not just a county, but a community goal. Uh, five hundred thousand, I think is, 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 um, is right on, so. Uh, thank you. Um, commissioners, any other questions right now? Um, I guess just one, you know, just one thought, um, in terms of the timing on this, and I know there's work to be done to kind of create an application process and work with Mountain Bizworks and things like that, but um, I think, I think we'd all love to kind of, if we're going to get the help out there, we want to get it to folks um as expeditiously as we can. You know, if it would be helpful for us to do, like, we could always do a special meeting, you know, because we do need to do a public hearing, but since we can't do that at the next meeting, so we don't have ten days. We've only got seven days, but rather than waiting another two weeks, you know, I mean, if we're in consensus, we know how it's going to go. We're going to approve it. We've, it's, um, but we need to do it. So if we needed to call a short special meeting to hold a public hearing, if that would help expedite the process, I bet, I bet the commission would be happy to do that.
Sure will. Yeah, I agree, Brian.
I agree.
Yeah.
That's great. Well, I will crunch the notice numbers and see what that looks like. Um, and we'll bring that back to you.
And just to clarify, Tim, are you recommending that we do the loan and grant program? I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
I, I think the, ye- yes, I think that, that is the best. Um, what I will say candidly is, uh, the business community is seeking grants and you've, you've heard that loud and clear. Uh, many businesses have taken on a tremendous amount of debt. Um, however, we, we think there is some flexibility that you could achieve uh with a loan and grant program. So, yes, it is more complicated, but it may work better.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that's excellent news. And thank you to Philip and your team for the work that'll happen in distributing the one million dollars. And, and that's for rent, utilities, basic emergency needs for people. Yeah, great.
And those funds are already, they can go ahead and start calling in for those funds, for the individual funds? I just want to clarify.
Philip, why don't you join us and these are more of your questions?
Just one point, if you're trying to do a, a special meeting before the first meeting, regular meeting in February, because of the dates uh that the legal notices run in the newspaper or when you can even put them in the newspaper, the soonest we could do it would be that, like the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, I think, of this month. So it'd save a few days, but not a lot. Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, well, if, if, um, if it's just a day or two, perhaps, um, it's not going to be as warranted, but thanks for looking at that. The other thing I would just say too is that, um, this is a good discussion. I, I hear, I hear support from the commission, so I think we can communicate to the community that we're going to do this. We have to have a public hearing and vote on it formally, but this is something we're going to do. So our staff, you know, as you work on more details, I think we can work under the assumption that this is going to go forward and folks can begin kind of thinking about how, you know, it might affect their business and whether it's something they want to look into. All right. Um, Philip, hey, how are you?
So a- as far as the question goes, yes, the, the money that we've set aside, nine hundred thousand of that is a CDBG grant and would be for rent, utilities, mortgage, those, those types of assistance. And then we have a, another hundred thousand that came through the Service Foundation and that we're going to use that for the same option right now until we get the CDBG, DGLR, BCB, BGLR in our hands. So, which I hope would be hopefully sometime early February. Uh, we have the documents, uh, in the process of getting those mailed back to them, so hopefully sometime early in February.
But if a resident needs emergency assistance with rent or utilities, they can call.
They can call two five zero fifty-five hundred right now. We are still serving people right now. We have some bridge dollars and we have some community partners that can still help. There's energy dollars out there.
So there's help for people and they can call tomorrow and access that help?
That would be correct.
Awesome, and thank you to the team that will help make that happen.
Thank you.
All right, if no further questions, um, I'll sit down, but thank you for your support and we'll continue working.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Um, Philip, I've had, I did have one other question. This is a question I asked staff to look at um, uh, recently. And there's a lot of different programs out there to help folks who've lost a job, lost wages, things like that. But um, just because, um, obviously one of the really important parts of it, um, for folks who have lost their job is unemployment benefits, right? State benefits and then there's some federal benefits. And I thought it might be helpful if you might just, you know, some of these things are fairly complicated unless you work on it all the time. If, if maybe you could just kind of summarize that at a high level, because I think first, you know, for us, uh, in a lot of ways, our biggest concern is for those folks who have lost their job, you know, either earlier this year or more recently. And um, so if you could describe a little bit about what those kinds of support levels look like, so we can sort of understand where, where we come in and provide some other things, how it sort of supplements that base level of support folks will hopefully be able to access.
Okay, uh, uh, we'll attempt to do that.
Okay.
Uh, it, it is a little complicated in a lot of different ways. Uh, but let's start with the easiest one, state unemployment benefits. Uh, they, nothing really, all of the federal stimulus dollars and the changes around unemployment did not affect state unemployment benefits. They still remain the way they've always been, which means that you're eligible for, um, it used to be up to three hundred dollars for a twelve week period. Uh, there was no extensions to those state unemployment benefits. They did increase the amount to three hundred and fifty dollars per week. I think that was on October the first. Um, and that was done with some cares money. And once those state benefits, state unemployment benefits expire, then, then they're expired. Unless you, you have to be off of unemployment for a certain number of, a certain amount of time, and I think that's generally a year unless you receive a new job and then requalify. And then there were the pandemic and extended unemployment benefits from a federal level. Early on, they were called extended benefits and that provided an extra six hundred dollars per week to individuals. Um, on top, it could be, they could run concurrently with your state unemployment or they could be after your state unemployment, after your state unemployment expired. Uh, those benefits expired in July and were not renewed. And then there was a, an extension on a federal level of those pandemic benefits, um, of three hundred dollars a week that it, that occurred sometime around the end of August or early uh September. And so those folks that maybe had expired state benefits or expired their six hundred dollars that, that went away in July could receive those, that three hundred dollar benefit per week. Uh, and then that expired at the end of December. And then there was one other category that, uh, for those folks who were not eligible for state unemployment benefits, the self-employed, uh, the artist, those folks, they could receive uh federal unemployment benefits, uh, either the six hundred or the three hundred during that same time period. With the new stimulus bill, there was, they added the three hundred dollars per week back in and those benefits are run through the end of March. And that would be for that group who exhausted at the end of um December or the self-employed folks who were under the pandemic benefits. The one big change that occurred with this though, with those prior federal benefits and with state benefi- with state benefits, you've always been required to look for a job, uh, to receive your benefits, and that never really changed. With those federal benefits until, till the end of December, that was not a requirement. With the new benefits that are in effect now through the end of March, they've gone back to that requirement that seeking employment is part of receiving those benefits.
Okay. So for folks who, you know, obviously there were a lot of jobs lost back in the spring. Um, so a lot of folks have already used their thirteen weeks of state unemployment benefits. So that's exhausted for that group of folks. So for, for those in that category, it's really the three hundred dollars of federal unemployment benefits, in essence, um, that they're able to receive now through March.
That, that would more than, for most folks, that's, that's probably correct. I mean, you know, that twelve weeks of state benefits, if you were, if you lost your job or had reduced employment, started receiving those benefits, uh, you know, early on, or say April or so, they lasted through what, June possibly and, and expired. And if you're not going back to work and, and say, uh, lost wages after that, then you would not be eligible for those state benefits again.
So, so if you're only getting the federal benefits, it's around, uh, maybe like thirteen hundred dollars a month or somewhere in that neighborhood is the federal support for folks who are currently not working. Who are laid off.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. It's one of the important parts of the safety net, but obviously it's also not a lot, you know, and certainly not a lot, that not enough for most people to uh live on by, by itself, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question real quick, Brownie?
Yes, please.
So is everyone eligible for that, Philip, or only if they were getting and they expired in December? This is just to carry forward from those that were getting in December? Is that what I heard, sir?
They, it is a carry forward for some folks, but new, newly uh lost wages could also be eligible for that also. Uh, you know, those benefits exist for, for anyone and, and the federal benefits are a little bit different than the state benefits. The, if you're eligible, you're going to get the three hundred dollars a week. With the state benefits, you know, it's on a sliding scale. It's based on the wages that you paid in. So not everybody would have been eligible for a maximum amount of benefits. We have a lot of people that we helped, they're receiving a hundred dollars a week in unemployment benefits.
Right. All right, any questions, commissioners? All right, thank you, Philip, we appreciate it. Ms. Pender, is there anything else we need to review tonight?
No, sir. Those were the two topics for tonight.
All right, well, I appreciate the staff pulling together the special meeting on pretty short notice. I think it's been super informative, so, um, and there's some exciting plans. So thank you uh very much. Commissioners, thanks for coming over for a special meeting tonight as well, and we're adjourned and we'll be back next Tuesday for a regular meeting.